Always go back to the same. And pray and pray. Father, we thank you now to let us continue this meeting. Bless your name again. We love you. Father, help us as we go from one good degree to another. We thank you for what you're going to do and what you've done thus far. This we ask in blessing our in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. That we just use the light of the Mount of Sages where it is. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Conference line has been set up. Phone number is one nine one dash nine one seven nine zero zero dash one zero two two. The access code is thirty-two thirty-four seven contact. This is not a toll free number and you may be subject to long distance charges according to your long distance plan. When the chairperson opens the meeting or public comment, please follow the below instructions. Please dial five, the moderator will unmute your line when it's your turn to speak. And notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Notice of hereby given pursuant to the Florida statute two eight six point oh one oh five. That any person deciding to appeal any matter considered at this meeting will need a record. Of the meeting may need to ensure that a verbatim record of this proceeding is made. Which records, which record include the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes. For the comments. Commenters may only speak once. A long time ago, this agenda, only agenda. We have to go to number three. Are there anything else to come before this vote before we go to number three? Okay. Number three, Senator Rowan Austin, to present legislative update.
How many quicken seats in the hall? She's running like. Jake and Paul for six of the car. If you want, if you wish to move to the next item and then we can come back to her.
Item number four, the Constitution office to discuss board the minimum wage impact.
I guess that'd be me.
Alright.
Turn the light off. Okay. Get time break.
Okay.
Just want to got you on too. That's a letter to inform the board on how I intend to turn up on this year. I ask you to take careful consideration and have, need some help. Well, we get help from the board they will get. If you will, if you get time out yourself or whenever you want to read that letter. And that's what my intention. Now I know that the other four constitutional officers are want to speak. And to the next speaker, I'm gonna excuse myself, but I will wait on them to say what they want to say. And now, this year, I think is a good time. I'll let them do their letter. I'm just telling y'all, I need some help. Thank you.
Yeah, alright.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to each of you on the upcoming budget and on budgets moving forward. I can't imagine being in your shoes and having to make the tough decisions that you are facing. Decisions that will impact not just department heads and county employees, but decisions that will ultimately impact each and every citizen of this county. However, I do know what it feels like year after year to implement unfunded mandates. And to be creative and to have to think outside the box, outside the norm, outside my comfort zone. To ensure successful election each and every year. That is exactly what we are facing moving into this budget cycle. And quite honestly, for the next six years and beyond. I use "we" on purpose because we, including you, are all in this together. We as constitutional officers are charged with doing what we must do to ensure our offices run smoothly. And that we are not only meeting the needs of the community, but that we are taking care of our employees. If I don't take care of my staff, quite frankly, no one else will. We, as in you, are responsible for doing all you can to ensure we have the resources we need to run our offices successfully. The voters have spoken. Matter of fact, sixty point eight percent of the voters have spoken. And we all know that the majority rules. The minimum wage is now here and we will feel its effect long after the six years it will take to hit the fifteen dollar an hour mark. But none of that even matters because the voters have spoken. We don't have a choice. We must move forward. We must begin now making plans for this unfunded constitutional amendment because the voters have spoken. You and I both know that the easy way out would be to only increase those that you must increase. Yet everybody took the ten dollar an hour this year and then plan and budget for those same employees to see a dollar increase each year until they meet that fifteen dollar threshold. But you and I both know that's not fair. At the end of the six-year step, you and me and every constitutional officer will have newer employees who are making exactly or close to what a seasoned employee is making. How can that be fair? How can you expect productivity within an office to not decline? What do you think that's going to do with the morale in an office? What's gonna keep an employee at that point from leaving? If employees don't feel valued and appreciated, what's keeping them from leaving to find an entry level job where no skill is needed? There is no stress, where the eyes of the nation are not watching and scrutinizing their every move? Because my staff faces those moments each and every election. Without skilled, knowledgeable, and dedicated staff, our offices won't run smooth. Our offices will begin to see gaps in the needs of the community. Even though we are all used to doing more for less, with this minimum wage increase, I fear that at some point, we will begin to shift to a less for more. Less work for more money. And the citizens of Taylor County deserve better than that. Each of you answer to the same voters I answer to. You're elected just like I am. Making tough decisions is not always easy, but doing the right thing is. I urge you to do what is right. Change the mindset of getting through this budget and we'll worry about the next one next year. Start thinking outside the box. I believe there are mechanisms in place to generate more revenue that will allow you to begin planning for this minimum wage increase and other needs of the county in a manner that would be fair and rewarding for every county employee. I want to acknowledge that each of us are here today because of the sheriff. He saw the need for a united front between the constitutional officers. This is the first time in my twelve years of serving as the supervisor of elections that the five of us have joined our efforts, put our minds together, and hashed out not only our needs, but to discuss the needs of the county employees. Sworn officers employed with the sheriff's office for some of the lowest pay in the counties surrounding us. Maybe even beyond that. Even though I can only speak for myself and my employees, I encourage you to do what is needed and find the resources to increase every sworn officer employed with the sheriff's department with a two dollar an hour increase. I intend to submit my budget with a dollar increase for all of my staff. Knowing that each year when the minimum wage increases another dollar, the need to implement this increment for my staff will be necessary. I encourage you to get creative. Stop thinking along the same path as thoughts have been in years past. Begin thinking outside the box, outside your comfort zone. Explore all of your options. Look at every option available to generate more revenue. The voters have spoken. But more importantly, the voters of Taylor County spoke when they elected each of you. You're never going to make everyone happy. A very wise man once said, "If you're making everyone happy, you're probably doing something wrong." Doing the right thing is not easy, but doing the right thing is the right thing to do. Please consider what's good for all county employees and the county as a whole. Thank you for doing what you do and thank you for your service to the public.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Everything okay?
Good.
Good. First of all, thank you. Dana pretty much put it in a nutshell of what we're here for. In my time on the board, my time as a constitutional officer, I had not seen constitutional officers come together like this. So I think it's important that we show a united front for our employees. I've had the pleasure to sit where you sit. Whether you want to call it pleasure or pain, sometimes it's fun, sometimes it's not. But I'll tell you that when I was on the board, we had a real estate boom like we're going through right now, it was a little larger. And two thousand seven, we lowered the mill. About two years after that, I'm in a meeting and I'm going, "Aye." We're sitting here and I think it was Commissioner Bethay, I said, "Did we do right back in two thousand seven?" He said, "Yeah, we did absolutely right in two thousand seven. It was the right thing to do." So like Dana said, what's the right thing to do now that we're in two thousand twenty-one? And we've got to show that our employees that we care about and we care about their futures. It's just so important, so important. Fifteen dollars an hour put behind the eight ball. The unfunded mandates from the state level and the federal level, sorry, Senator. But we have, we have to deal with those. It's just part of life and we have to do it. You guys have a, have a tough job, a very tough job. Sometimes like this. And it's tough to, it's tough to make everybody happy, exactly like Dana said. I learned that first year home. You know, one thing I would ask you to do, as she did, is just explore every opportunity that we have, whatever it may be. Sales, tanks, I don't know what the opportunities are. Let's brainstorm, let's figure it out together, you know, let's work together and make it happen. But what I would say is, as it's happened when I was a commissioner, we'd get to the budget workshop. We'd open those big six inch binders, we'd grab a red pen. We can't grab a red pen anymore. I'm sorry. We can't. I mean, we're, you know, we've had five percent cuts, we've had two and a half percent cuts. It's been tough. The sheriff, I mean, position wise, he's got them out there. They need to be filled, guys. Got to have them filled. We don't have any choices. This county is headed, and you know this, into an important phase. And we've got to make the important decisions and make the right ones. We have to look forward. You know, what, what do we want our county to look like in twenty years? We've got a vision twenty-sixty plan sitting there, kind of, you know, free two million dollar plan sitting right there for us. What do we want it to look like? We want to have a place that our children and grandchildren can come back to and work and have great opportunities with jobs. What do we want? I think we can make a statement, I think this board can make a statement now of what we want in Taylor County. I think it's important that we do. And I agree also with the sheriff with the two dollars for the sworn officers and a dollar for my employees in my office. And as Dana said, it will happen year after year as we increase to get to that fifteen dollar mark for you guys. And we have some numbers together and we've been brainstorming trying to, to help come up with some things. One has been very beneficial working with us. Thank you, One. And I just, I just ask you to look at everything you can. Once again, I thank you for what you guys are doing. And if I can help you, we can help you, we will. And that's what we're here for. Thank you for your time. Alright, so you know, I've worked with you guys probably closer than anybody and it's been, it's been just a great pleasure with this board. You know, it's, you guys are doing a great job. And you know, I don't know what else I can add that, that the constitutional officers, that I already said, other than just, you know, my support for that. I think what we're asking for is to, you know, to give, to give everybody ten dollars this year and a dollar raise for everyone so that we don't see compression. You know, we want to try to keep that where it's at. A percentage increase just makes that bigger, so that's not the right thing either, so we feel like, you know, a dollar is what it is. I know the sheriff needs two dollars for his, his sworn officers to be able to compete with other law enforcement agencies. And so, you know, we understand that, you know, he's, he's got a tougher situation than what we have. But anyway, from what I want to do is, is commit to you guys, because I, I, as a CFO, I, I, I see the numbers. You know, and I know it's not, it's not easy what we're just about to do. And I know that some of the funds are, are going to be tougher than others. You know, I know a road bridge fund, it's going to be tough to come up with a dollar an hour for each employee in that fund. I saw the waste fund is already, you know, you guys are already been addressing that and looking into what you can do about that, so. But what I, what I do want to commit to you is that, that me and, you know, my staff, my finance staff, will do everything we can to get you the numbers, to help you look at all the options that you have. I think one thing that we probably need to do is, is have a five-year outlook in each, in each fund. Because each fund, you know, is funded differently. And look at those revenues and the things that are going on in those funds specifically. And I know y'all haven't even had a chance to look at the budget yet. We haven't, it ain't ready yet, so I know you guys haven't even had the opportunity to, 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 to look at the budget and decide what to do and all that's coming later. We just wanted to, to just get ahead of it and let you know that, that we're hoping that there'll be the funding there to, to try to get ahead of this minimum wage thing this year, go ahead and start the process. And so we can go ahead and get ahead of it a little bit. And then come up with a plan to, to grant it for the next five years until we actually hit the fifteen dollars, so. So anyway, again, you know, I'm like the rest of them, I think your job is tough and I think you guys are great at it. And I appreciate everything that y'all are doing. I enjoy working with y'all and, and you know, I'm going to be here working with you through that budget. You know, and helping as much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So first, thank you so much for having all of us. I am in complete agreeance with everything that my fellow constitutional officers just said. And they gave great examples of why not only we should be increasing our employee salaries, but why we must, as the constitutional amendment has mandated us to. There's no time like the present to get ahead of what is coming in the next few years. With the fifteen dollar minimum wage impact, by giving each county employee a dollar raise and the sworn officers two dollars, two dollars. I'm here to tell you that we will have an increase in our tax roll this year. And that that will help alleviate a portion of those budget increases. But what about future years? We find ourselves searching to find, to fund budget increases and tackling inflation left and right. How are we going to solve these long-term concerns here and now? We can't always rely on unexpected increases in market value or a mileage increase that has a maximum of ten mil shelf. We must think bigger and we must think outside the box. Taylor County has the industry and that industry's workforce. What we need is more housing with more community amenities. Bottom line, we have increased commercial viability with decreased residential availability. The opportunity of sustainable residential revenue is disappearing before our eyes. The appreciation of a residential home compared to an RV camper or mobile home appreciation is what makes the difference between long-term residential market increases and decreases. The goal should be to increase our county's value, to increase its attraction. Is the county neglecting to capitalize on potential taxable value by refusing to create and enforce regulations? I'm just going to use the RV regulations on the coast, for example. Imagine you want to build a million dollar home in Taylor County, but the lot next to you can have four RVs on the property, full-time, anytime. That makes it less likely for that person to build here and live here when they can build in another county that has regulations against such things. Should there be RV parks? Absolutely. People should have a place to take their recreational vehicles and enjoy our beautiful coast without it having a negative effect on the surrounding properties. We are in the Florida housing market, the greatest market in the country. Our county is growing in value despite itself, simply because of the Florida market that surrounds us. It isn't growing because we're doing something right. It's growing because the rest of Florida is doing something right. Just some suggestions that I'm throwing out there, just like we all said a second ago. Is we have these budget increases, but what can we do to make a sustainable revenue? We have a plan, Vision twenty-sixty, waiting to be implemented. What we should be investing in is maybe a rural planning coordinator to see Vision twenty-sixty through and see it done responsibly. I do not want to see Taylor County turned into Orlando or, none of us do. That's why it must be done responsibly. The reason I'm mentioning, mentioning these and the coast so much is because it's our greatest opportunity for growth. We aren't attracting what we could be to our beautiful natural coastline and it can be done easily. We just have to have a direction and a goal. I can't thank y'all enough for hearing my suggestions and considering our current budget requests. I thank y'all for serving our great county in all of your capacities. I know the days are long and the decisions aren't always easy, but doing the right thing for the people is the ultimate goal for us all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for all the input and we'll be looking forward for all that support for the days to come. You know, in whatever ways that we can be creative, certainly we, I believe that message has been sent forth very clearly, so. Thank you for that. We seek a load southside of us, ads to paying these girls things that they use to appear. Thank y'all for the presentation, for taking the time to be here. And we'll look forward to your availability in these future discussions that I'm sure are going to be quite lengthy, so. It brings popcorn to the show. But thank you for the work you're doing and, and you know, helping our residents. That's what it's all about, so. Certainly, they have spoken. That is the mandate. That's the job's got to be done. And the path to success is yet to be determined, I believe, but I will commit to navigating that path and looking forward for all y'all's support along the way and that includes this board as well. So, thank you.
Yes, I understand that all of you are looking out for your employees. And we have always, since I've been here, we've put a lot of effort into protecting the county employees. And we, all along since I've been here, we've done, we've done that by giving raises when we could. It wasn't every year, but when we could give a raise, we had no qualms about giving a raise. And when we couldn't give a raise, then we gave tax-free Christmas bonuses. Sometimes they were very generous. I think last year we gave them generous Christmas bonus. And I can tell you now that this did not come without public criticism. Every time, you can just bet every time you think you do something right, there's going to be somebody to tell you that it wasn't right. And this public criticism came when private companies, with private companies' workers didn't get anything. But we, we did try to, if we couldn't give a raise, to give a nice tax-free Christmas bonus. In addition to that, since I've been here, we've provided free single coverage insurance for our employees. Who does that? That is a gift to our employees. I'm glad we've been able to do it. I hope we can continue to do it. But I think that's a, a great benefit that county employees have enjoyed all of us. I feel like you five constitutional officers are putting us into an impossible situation. We already have a daunting task of trying to find a solution to a mandate of just increasing the minimum wage. We're talking about just the minimum wage. It's a daunting task to us. How are we going to just do that? Some of you, obviously, you've got together and you've looked at our budget and, and obviously, some of you got it figured out. I, I'm anxious to hear some of these ideas that y'all have come up with because so far, I haven't heard, heard any of it. But I'm sure we can think outside the box and I'm sure there's things that we can do. It's been suggested that we raise the abdolor taxes. We can raise the abdolor taxes. We can raise fees. We can raise that gas tax to the nine cent. We can reallocate the one cent sales tax from the sheriff's office and the hospital to the county so that we can put it towards salary increases. We can cut services. We can cut staff. I was elected by the same people that y'all, some of the same people that y'all were. And I want to hear from the public. My number is eight three eight seven three two three. I want the public to call me. I want to hear if the public wants your taxes raised and your fees raised and your services cut and all these other things. Is this okay with the public? It'll be okay with me, but I work for the public the same as y'all do and I want that public. I want just five people to tell me. I want to hear what the public has to say, the people that put us all into office. As I said, you five constitutional officers, you're looking out for your employees. The five of us on this board, we're responsible for making wise and prudent decisions that will keep this county financially solid. At this time, I don't know whether promising we can give you such salary increases for your employees or not. I don't know if it's, if it's wise or if it's prudent. I can tell you that we'll heavily consider it. And y'all all understand, we're very limited to what we can do. I'm not just looking out, and I do love the county employees and we've got some great county employees, but we've got thousands of other people in Taylor County that we're responsible to. And we're responsible for keeping our finances in check. Y'all are not the ones that the governor's going to call up and ask, "Okay, why have you made decisions now and you can't pay your bills and you can't run the county?" And that can happen. And we, a whole five of us, can be fired by the governor. You know that. So we have to be very careful with what we do. I hear it's not fair. I totally agree that giving some people the raise and others that have been loyal and been here for a long time, I understand that. And I plan to talk to our senator about that too, when she comes up here, how she can help us. Because we have been backed up into a corner with this, with this fifteen dollar minimum wage. And I don't know how we're going to be able to give everybody the incremental raises. You're talking about from predictions that I've heard that it's almost a million recurring dollars a year. Where in the world are we going to get another million dollars recurring every year to finance this? When even now, when we sit down at budget time, Lawanda and our, our finance director, they're scrunching numbers day and night. When even now, when we sit down at budget time, Lawanda and our, our finance director, they're scrunching numbers day and night. Just to get us through sometimes a three or four-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. And we've cut on our end, we've cut over here to the bone, and how can we add another million dollars almost to that? I don't know. I appreciate if y'all can help us, obviously, like I said, you talked about it, and you've got some good ideas, and we wanna hear it. How are we gonna do this, that's like you said, we're in this together. That is the truth, we, we're in here together. So, again, eight-three-eight-seven-three-two-three, I wanna hear from the public before I make my decision. I'll do everything that I can to help our employees, whatever that may be. But I'm not gonna put myself, or I'm not gonna put the county in a bind financially, to do something that I know we cannot live up to what we wanna do. And this is not anything personal against our employees, nothing against y'all, it's just dollars and cents, and that's where I'm coming from, thank you.
I'd just say I appreciate y'all being here, uh, thank you for the warm welcome, first year in office. To say the least, uh, you know, here all in your loud and clear, you know, I'm sure we can, it's definitely gonna be a challenging budget season, you know. As you heard, Commissioner Figel, this is substantial amount of money to come up with, all in one year, over a five-year period. So, I look forward to working with all of you, you know, you know, work through this in the most efficient manner that we can all do.
I sure appreciate y'all coming. I'm gonna, we all might sit, I'm gonna sit down with each one of y'all, and we're gonna have to do some serious numbers. I want to get all y'all's ideals and thoughts on it, and, and make we can work through this thing together. If there's any way to do it, I'm, I know we've been kicking the can down the road many years, with this business, we haven't went up on anything. Now, we've, we've done, we've done the comments, we're just, the governor's election business, with everybody voting on this fifteen dollars, we just, now, we get a situation, we gotta do something, so. I'll bear with y'all, and I'm sure we're gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be tough, we want to do it together. Thank you.
One more in, uh, mandate, is that what we, what's this, mandate to die proface?
To bring the minimum wage, the ones that are not making fifteen, within the next five years, I believe, round to fifteen.
You got a budget coming, and we will be working the budget, okay? That's all we can do, that's all we can promise. With your help, all things are possible, okay? Anyone else in the public who wants to speak to this? Okay. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
We'll go back to number three, Miss Lowry. Honestly? Raise that two-million-dollar penny.
Probably a change.
Well, thank you all very much for letting me kind of pop in, and that's just really interesting, actually, I'm glad, I'm glad I was maybe a little bit late, so I could. See this sort of unprecedented, um, united front, um, trying to deal with something that is, you know, unfortunately, so many of things that you all deal with are unfunded mandates. Most of them come from us, this didn't actually come from us, this came from the people. Um, so, I don't have an easy solution, but, but I do have somewhat of the news from Tallahassee, um, that, you know, that might put us in, you know. I, I want us to start really working together because, um, or continue working together. Uh, you know, we started this budget, the Florida Legislature, my first year in the Senate, um, really looking down the barrel of a gun of, you know, no, no revenues. To get a three billion, two-to-three-billion-dollar hole in our budget, and, you know, not having any idea what we're gonna do. And then, by, by the time, you know, we closed out session, we had a hundred-billion-dollar budget, a lot of it's non-recurring. Um, but we were able to almost fill the holes, so, interesting place we find ourselves in is with a lot of non-recurring money, which does not help you in this current situation, clearly. Um, but I do think it's an opportunity for us, and particularly our fiscally constrained counties, to really think, again, looks outside the box, as far as what needs do we have, non-recurring needs, that we can, that we can go after. Um, you know, we, we were successful in getting the eighty-one thousand dollars for the Forest Museum, which I'm, you know, excited about. Um, and the Forest Capitol Hall Auditorium Improvement Project was eighty-one-six-seventy-five, we still have to wait for the governor's veto on that, you know, side of the budget. Um, but there are, you know, there are a number of, we were ten billion dollars additional in non-recurring campus state. And, and we allocated that to a number of, um, of places that can be accessible for subject to sewer, for resilience, for a number, uh, uh, emergency management, a number of things. Um, and I, so, I, I want y'all to, as you're going through, I think this is good timing, as you're going through your process, you know, let's, let's think about some of the ways that we might be able to work together and accessing some of those resources. I've been sitting down with the, with this, um, budget preparation staff in the Senate, and they are, um, will, willing to help small county, you know, if we can identify some needs, they're willing to help us go through the, you know, the, the possible sources. Because in addition to that ten billion dollars, there's another, you know, you all receive, I'm not sure what your amount is, maybe four million? Yeah, for, you know, and, and the guidelines just out on that, again, non-recurring, but the treasury guidelines are out. Um, there's, there's FAQ frequently asked questions, and they said, they told us to send y'all to those, because that seems to be very flexible money. Um, and then there are an additional thirteen billion dollars in pots that are outsetters, there's seven billion dollars that's available for us to, to, to sort through in the current state budget. Then there's another thirteen billion outside of the state budget in, um, you know, childcare assistance grants and more environmental pieces, and so there's just, there's a lot. So, I think making sure that we're working together, uh, to think through what your priorities are and how we can, um, go, see about going after what's available from the state, what's available, available from the federal government, and what to ask for next session. Uh, and I just wanted to start that conversation now. Um, a couple of other things, as you all know, we sort of dodged a bullet with the, um, with the threatened prison closures. Um, and that, we had, they had started trying to mandate the closure of four prisons, and, you know, and the criteria was a little scary for most, almost all, all of my counties that have prisons that are such an important part of the economy. Um, and that, you know, that language did not go through. The secretary has assured me that they're, you know, they have the authority, they can close one prison, and they can put that money, the savings, towards correct cost of pay, which is what their big issue is. Clearly, y'all are seeing that issue as well, because the cuts of, um, the inmate labor, you know, that's another piece of your budget, and, um, I'm having ongoing conversations with the secretary about that. Um, I did go out and visit, um, the Correctional Institute a couple, the last part of session, and, um, tried to be as supportive as I can to, for those folks. Other pieces that you, my broadband bill, or pieces of my broadband bill passed, um, including a one-point-five-million dollars for statewide mapping, which is gonna have, start happening soon, so that we can start having accurate data about where we have high-speed internet and where we don't. The FCC has asked for state, the localities to help them do that, and so, that is to me the first piece that needs to happen for us to get internet to the places where, where we don't have it, and which we all know is a critical issue facing our communities. Other than that, um, I've been, I've came and visited, um, superintendent out to the primary school last week, and I say thank you to our teachers, I know, um, there, this has been a very challenging year for teachers and school staff, and they're doing a great job. Um, so, I've, uh, I've enjoyed my quick visits to Taylor County, including this one, but, um, but just wanna, wanna have that open-door policy with you all, and want you all to know that we're here to help you in any way that we can. And, um, look forward to figuring out how we can, can work together to, to, to help face this and, and all the challenges going forward, so that, you know, I feel like this is an opportunity for small counties to stop digging out and looking backwards, and to think about looking forwards. And thinking about economic development and the types of things that you guys have all been focused on, so. With that, I'll, we have to answer any questions.
Yes, ma'am, you can give us the telephone number, or we can get all that. Let me see, seven million, seven billion?
So, no, it's, there's, there's ten, there's seven billion that was out in, in the state, in the state budget. Um, so, you know, we'll just, just write some checks.
We're glad to have you, you got some good points.
Yeah, first of all, I wanna thank you for coming, uh, just coming down here on your own and, uh, bringing us up to date about what you've done this past year in the legislature, and that, um. You're welcome to come anytime and talk to us, and I look forward to, um, sitting down with you over the course of time. As, as you know, you heard tonight, we're facing a double dilemma, and, um, y'all gotta figure out how to help us through this. And, and it's not just upsets every county, but especially hit hard are these rural racing, uh, counties. Uh, I, I just don't know how we're gonna do this. Um, you know, you can, you can only raise your mileage to ten, you can raise everything else to, to give the employees a raise, I just don't know, you know, we're, I feel like we're backed up in a corner. And I know with our, um, public safety workers, um, they do leave for better wages, and I don't know if there's any way that we can get any more help with that to keep them. It's the same thing with the prison, uh, they, they can't retain people for that very same reason. So, um, we're just, we're, we're really, um, we're really in a jam. And, uh, any way that you, that you can help us, uh, would really appreciate it.
Oh, Senator, well, thank you, I'm sorry, if you have it in mind, there, we, everyone, thank you for that. Uh, it is great, uh, for you to take your time, come down, not only that, and all the efforts, uh, that, that you guys, but you put into the budget to, uh, let's say, you know, for stopgap in for our corrections. Uh, workers and all that, and this economy, so, not just in Taylor County, but in several counties, the surrounding, so it's, it's huge. And, uh, thank you for your willingness to communicate and, and hear our concerns, and, and not only just hear those, but then act on that, so. Um, not only that, but with the works that you're describing, so, and all these things that hugely, not just salaries, but, uh, you know, all these infrastructure things, needs that, that we depend very heavily upon. So, we obviously will not be forgetting where you're at, so please don't forget that we're down here, and, and thank you for all of those efforts going into the group. We continue to work forward and see a path to success, and that's still developing, so, thank you very much for your time and, and all of those efforts that go into that, it's, it's not a nervous, uh, thought, so. Spoken, very, very appreciative for that.
I did mention on Scranton Scott that, uh, that there was a reduction in Scranton Scott, but Senator Riley, he's my next-door neighbor with eleven counties, addition as well as my eleven counties. We've, we've spoken, you know, multiple times with the senate president, who's assured us at the DOT, um, they've got a big chunk of money that, that we are to work with them to make sure some of that comes to our small counties, so we're gonna be focused on that too.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll just echo what Mr. Figu and Newman, appreciate you being here, appreciate how you and your group does to work for our community and all the surrounding communities. You know, our budget, what we requested last year, now, we'll, we'll just have to triple that this year in order to get a little more, so. We thank you for being here, and, you know, we look forward to working with you in the future to, to help us through this next challenging season that we're coming into, but appreciate you.
I sure appreciate you coming down, blessed to have you coming, you're welcome anytime. We'll help you any way we can, and we know you'll help us any way you can, and, uh, thank you for looking out for us on the prison business. I know that's tough, y'all, because we had a lot of people in Taylor County call me that worked at the prison, they were really shook up, thinking that they might get their doors closed out there. There's a lot of people close to retirement age, and a lot of them discarded it pretty, they got a tough hell out there, and they, uh, they told, told me, hey, you, thank you. I appreciate it.
I echo what most of them said, but all of them, but mine, I still say, about two-and-a-half million dollars, they're gonna help us out.
That non-recurring money, that non-recurring money is hanging on trees.
Mr. Figu, I wanna add one thing, if I'm going.
Go ahead.
I know I spent a few minutes asking you for something, but I do wanna tell you, thank you for the money that you helped us get for the first Capitol Hall, and also for saving our prison and, and looking out for the Scranton Scott programs, which, I mean, without those, we would literally have no new road paper or resurfacing. Uh, so, we really appreciate that, and you know, you have a reputation to give, so. We're looking, we're looking at you and, and any way that we can help you, uh, just please let us know that.
They all have our phone numbers, and follow you guys too, so, uh, please, please keep in touch, and thanks for allowing us to do today.
Okay.
Thank you, be safe going home, thank you.
Now, just before you go, is anyone from the public?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I got a question. If, you know, the closing of the prison's not come up again, I wanna put this in your head, if they close our prison, we want our land back.
Okay.
Right?
Excellent.
We gave it to them, and, uh, did a lot of work, uh, I worked on, on getting that prison here, and if they're gonna take, if they're gonna close it, then.
Then I can close it, it might be by, but. But I know, but I hear you, and those are, um, it's, it was a really weird, that, that, that initial, um, language to require the demolition of the, of the building, but, you know, I don't know where that was come from, but I, but. It's a very good point, and I, you know, and I did, you know, call around to say, I need to make, be making the economic case, and you tell me exactly what this, and, and that was very helpful in making our arguments, and how important these are, and that's another important point to make, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
All right. All right.
Did I hear you say, they said it have, if, when they closed it, have to demo the buildings?
They, when they initially started with the proposal to close four, it was close four and re-earthing all the facilities. It was very, it was very odd, because they're all in different states, states of.
That leaves a lot of taxpayer money to demo their buildings, it'd be terrible.
Because, yeah, so, um, but that, they moved away from that, all of that language altogether, and moved to the more comprehensive language, just for one, so, um, and that, you know. Secretary was happy to have our help, I think, and, and fighting against that, so, we're continuing to work. Thank y'all, thank you.
Okay, we're good.
All right. Good luck. And this is Austin Malane, one of my staff people who y'all haven't met yet, so.
Nice to meet y'all.
Thanks, everybody, we're gonna head up on the road.
Okay. Number five, I believe.
I would like to request that we table that item and consider having maybe a dedicated workshop to that, to that subject, if that's, if that's something that we can schedule.
Do we need a motion to that?
All right, that's fine. All right, please, all of us.
Number six. Board to discuss parent-run baseball, that will be making.
So, the idea here, you know, I've sat in with the T-Grand. And we got a group of guys here now, they're back in the back, I appreciate these guys coming, Will, Billy Gav, and Cory, they sat, you know, in on the, uh, two of them sat in on the T-Grand board, we've been discussing, you know, potentially transitioning baseball from county-run to parent-run. You know, today, you got soccer and softball's already there, you know, it's efficient, um, no issues, uh, softball, actually, this year's our first year standalone, no county funding at all. That, that kinda phased through a, I think it actually probably was a five-year period. With baseball, we, we're looking at wanting to do this over a three-year period, um, you know, we're doing this, you know, the, you know, benefit on this is, you know, we always, you know, umpires, you can't pay umpires, the county, we can't pay umpires on the spot, you know. The, what you set up, you know, parent-run soccer, parent-run baseball, they can pay referees, pay umpires out there on the spot. Uh, over the course of the three-year period, you know, we would phase all county funding out, other than. other than concessions and, you know, obviously we're responsible for the facility, things that need repairs. You know, not that it's done, you know, not that it's efficient, not really efficient today. I mean, I think our Director, he does a great job. He does a great job, but when you got, you got a guy out there, he's trying to deal with six ball fields, you know, he's trying to, you know, line the fields, he's having to do registrations, he's having to do, do uniforms, you know, coaches, do all the background checks, it's just a lot. So, the idea here today is really just to get the board's blessing for this, this group to move forward. And I met with them, you know, they formed a board, you know, about what, five of you? They have formed a board of five of you, five guys, and I met with them the first, you know, initial meeting and, you know, kind of, but they'll take it from there. And, you know, they've got an MOU, they've got a set of bylaws, they kind of mimic kind of what the softball group does. And if this is board's will, I would like for us to, you know, be able to, the T-Crab group to bring this to this board's second meeting in June, for us to vote these guys into this parent run baseball. Today, we just want, you know, really, I just want all of these guys to continue wasting their time heading down this path and it's not this board's will for that to happen. So, I just really just want the board's blessing for these guys to continue moving forward and, and forming this parent run baseball program.
I, you know, uh, this has been talked about for some time and I know that soccer has been very successful being parent run and now softball, and so I'm, I'm all for it. I'd like to hear more of the details about it, but, um, if it's gonna be, uh, like soccer and, and which has been very successful, then I'm, I'm all for it.
It's, you know, just like, pretty much just like soccer, it'll go, just like softball, um, concessions, you know, we're responsible for now, but you know, we're back to that, you know, we're gonna end up, you know, we, we can look at that. We'll all talk about that because you're gonna be, you're back, you're gonna pay somebody fifteen dollars for power and stuff there and sell them and, and liquor bar. So, that might not necessarily be efficient where these guys and even the softball side, if they take over concession, it's all volunteer folks and they're willing, the softball group is willing to make that transition. But, you know, we just, this board would have to be willing to turn that part loose as well. So, um, so, yeah, just today, just like to see the board's will for these guys. I think they've kind of done all the due diligence to, they've got their MOU, they've, they've formed their bylaws and they'll be ready to present that, I believe, in our second, we're gonna have a T-Crab meeting first of the month and then they'll be ready to present that at our second meeting in, in June, for the board's approval.
I certainly support that, um, uh, don't see any problems with it. Thank you for forming those, uh, or I should say forming it as an organization and expect it obviously runs smoothly that way. So, I don't see a problem with it.
I don't see no problem with it. I'll run to help the children and that every, every day spend out there with them and work with them. It'll be just one day they won't be on the street and I appreciate that. I'll help you any way I can.
You know, I, I want to thank y'all too, uh, at what you're doing, spending your own time, that's so valuable. And if there's any way that I, as a Commissioner or any other way can help y'all, I'm, I'm, I'm available. And, uh, Commissioner, I appreciate, you're doing a really good job on this committee and I really appreciate what you're doing. And as far as concessions, I know, um, earlier this year we were short, I, and I told Paul One that that time I said, I'll go out and I'll work at the concessions then. I don't mind, so if you, if you get in a jam, most of the time I can come help. I don't mind volunteering my time to help you at the concessions and if that's what it takes. Thank y'all.
Well, either one of them like to say something.
That's up to them, you got it.
Well, they'll all start talking next month, I think.
I heard what, uh, Commissioner Iglesias said about, uh, the recreation threat that we have here. Uh, that us taking this over and being wholly ran and wholly, you know, funded by a parent organization, we do not want to lose him. He is an asset. He will be an asset to the youth of Taylor County. And so just because, you know, soccer, softball, baseball is, is parent run organizations, he is still a very, very valuable asset to our community. And just because we're taking all this headache off of his shoulders, he still got plenty to do.
Okay.
So, I just.
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak, I, I think that this would allow us the time to devote to upkeep of the sports complex. I know we're looking at the possibility of more tournaments and it would just simply not only free up Mr. Mullins' time, but the support staff, the, the personnel manager, and we all try to work together with recreation. And it would, it would enable us to really concentrate on making our, helping to make our sports complex uh, what it, what it is now and will continue to be in the future.
Yeah. We've got, we've got some more items coming down the pipes with the T-Crab to, to enhance the, you know, option to have tournaments and bigger tournaments to bring in more folks to the community and fill up our hotels, fill up our restaurants, you know, things like that, to use our, use our complex. So, we've got some more things coming down the pipes to that aspect, and so it's.
Okay. Now, can I, can I next, we'll go to number seven, board to discuss disc golf. That's four, nine, that's.
Tell us what that is.
So, hey, thank you guys. Thank you guys. So, uh, uh, you know, it should be a, you know, sort of information in regard to the, you know, disc golf. Um, Mr. Agner, Warren Agner, he had come to me and, you know, in the past, they have discussed disc golf and, and, and developing and putting a disc golf course on our complex, which I think today, you know, they've got approval. They had approval to put the course there, but it's not a, you know, uh, what I was gonna say, professional type, you know, you know, course where when folks come up, it's in a worldwide database is what I understand from, or you're talking to more folks, you know, when they're coming, passing through, folks looking to play, you know, a game of disc golf, they go into the complex. You know, I think they have some portable baskets set up that, you know, you end up not knowing. When the folks come into the, the complex, they don't, they don't know what the layout of the course is, so it's confusing. They end up just leaving, you know, he ends up hearing from both and they just, they, they just end up leaving and not, not actually using, using the course. And, you know, most complexes like theirs do having disc golf course. So, what, uh, Mr. Agner is asking is for us to, you know, potentially assist in forming a more professional course with signage that actually, you know, tells the layout of the course, so when these folks come, they know just where to start. You know, with tee pads, you know, more professional baskets, fixed baskets, I guess, so to speak, in place. Um, so, you know, I think on the last page, we've got, there's some cost there. I think that cost is everything. Yeah, when did y'all do this cost analysis?
Uh, it's been some time ago. It's probably. So, it's, it may be a little higher now, but.
So, the cost analysis is everything except the tee pad, which is the concrete pads, um, for the course. So, these guys, I think total right now, they've been looking at probably about ten thousand dollars. And I guess today I just, you know, wanted you to get approval, maybe add this to, whatever our next two agendas to, you know, allow staff to find the funding, you know, to put this disc golf course. You know, these guys, they, you know, they're wanting to, you know, do this just like soccer, softball, baseball and have, you know, leagues, you know, like we do our rec leagues, they want to form leagues out there, you know, have, have the disc golf games and, you know, coaches, the whole, just similar to what soccer, have the whole tournaments in, at, at our complex with disc golf. So, you know, if this board's will have, you know, but allows the agenda this, you know, next month on one of our first two meetings, allow staff to, the funding, to have fun with that course. Should that be funded through FERDAP?
It could be, but I, I think it's too low of a cost. Now, if you wanted to explore having this at a different site, I know we looked at Hampton Springs in the past and possibly, uh, applying for a FERDAP grant to, to develop a course there. That was just a staff level of discussion. However, if, if you apply for a FERDAP grant for that, then you're kind of limiting yourself on other opportunities, uh, say at the sports complex or other sites. So, if it's a matter of ten or twelve thousand dollars, we may be able to find that, um, you know, within our budget or within capital funds, uh, just depending on the, on the individual costs for the equipment.
I understand we didn't spend the money on the new softball field. We had us some money there that.
Correct.
End of that being, we were probably, what, three hundred thousand dollars shy.
At least, yes. That was, that was woefully under budgeted.
Yeah, and that, those funds are there and, you know, potentially use some of those funds to, you know, I, I don't think it mattered whether it's at the complex or at another facility, you know, somewhere, but, but look for the funding. I would be in support of, look for the funding to make this happen.
Have we got the room there for?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've got the room. He's looking at what, eight, is it nine or eighteen holes?
It's a nine hole layout right now, mainly just because of, that's the baskets that we've bought and donated to the course to start out with, but it definitely has room for, uh, improvement and eighteen holes.
We're talking on the back course, way back in, in the back.
Right.
Beyond the soft, uh, basketball courts.
I'm fine with it. It goes right along with wrestling sports. I mean, it's something I'd never heard of before. I knew it on May the ninth.
I mean, I asked.
I've never heard of it.
Over and I said, no, how young or how old have you got Kenny B. to, to play this game? And so now he's, he's, he's a whole. And, you know, but they, you know, say, it's, it's as young as you want or as old as they want if they want to play the game.
Yeah, I, I would say it's, it's, it's very flexible. It can be used as a tool for the community to bring people in for tournaments and to beautify our, you know, our sports complex as it is, get kids involved away from, you know, maybe some kids that aren't involved in the team sports, it could give them something to do in the evenings that come and play our sports complex. And for the, for the money, the benefit that you get to utilize the every, all the space, that's a beautiful course, but no, to low impact, but very, a lot of benefits to our community, to our youth and to our families, you know. It's a family sport that can be gone out and played by anybody, but the main concern, the main issue now is, you know, safety with the tee pads, no signage to show. Um, my, we would, my wife has already held a tournament out there for, uh, a company. She's, uh, helps out called Throw Paint, which raises awareness and funds for breast cancer. So, the course could be used in those ways as well. It's already been, um, been utilized quite a bit and we would, you know, we're excited to try to, uh, bring this along and continue to grow the sport here. It's one of the fastest growing sports in the country. Uh, Tallahassee, Tom Brown Park in Tallahassee is one of the, one of the number one courses in the country. And, um, Sergio here just played a tournament in Live Book over the weekend that held a hundred people from all over the county, different counties. Live Book has two courses, um, Thomasville has a course, Tallahassee has a course, Valona has a course, Gainesville has multiple courses, Madison has a course. And so, they're being developed all around us and we use it as a sort of a circuit to bring people here to do tournaments, but also it could be used as leisure recreation for our, our county and our youth and our community as well. So, a lot of good benefits there with little, little to low cost, some impact to the property, but yet beautifies and allows you to utilize the space, um, I think in a very appropriate manner for, for what it can be used for.
Sounds like something we need, really does.
I, 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 I still don't know, uh, very much about this, how many people really play this and who plays it? Is it just for young people, old people, everybody? Uh, I, I'd like to know a lot more about it, but I think before that we, I think before we just jump off and, um, say, oh, yeah, let's do that, uh, uh, we need staff input, uh, what, what would this mean in terms of, um, added responsibility to staff? Exactly what would that be and what would be the ongoing recurring cost? Um, we just need to know a little bit more about it before we jump off into something, um, like that. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm not saying I'm for it. I just need to know more about it and more involvement, what the involvement from staff would be and, and how much is this gonna cost us? Cause I mean, we're, you know, we're already talking about how poor we are, so.
I just, I would like to reiterate to you that the course is already in place and, uh, so the upkeep is already being done as it is now. We're just looking to our, our improvement of the baskets and the tee pads that wouldn't be a recurring cost comparison to what it is right now.
So, you already have this going on at the sports complex?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, they, they've already got approval.
It's a basket hanging on the front end of the net.
Yeah, it's a basket. It's like a little, it's a gift that they just throw into the, just like golf, just like playing golf.
It's essentially ball golf, but with a, a frisbee, um, same rules, um, except it's much cheaper for people to play. I mean, if you spend three hundred or four hundred bucks, you can literally play with twenty or thirty dollars worth of discs. Um, and in most places, uh, opposed to the ball golf, you know, you have to go and, and pay, uh, to go play private courses. Um, that's what the beauty of, uh, disc golf is, is it's in public, it allows the public to come play with low cost and it, it really does bring quite a few people. Um, like Laura was saying, I played, uh, Sunday there in Live Book and there was upwards of a hundred people playing. And I think, uh, uh, about seventy of them were from out of town, so they, you know, buy gas, you know, buy food and all that and you can have a whole two-day tournaments, um, which will bring people to stay in hotels as well.
And it's all sanctioned by the Professional Disc Golf Association as well. You can find the stats there, how many women, children, you know, men that are associated with, they pay for their Professional Disc Golf Association fees every year and they play on the circuits to increase their ratings. But, I mean, obviously you don't have to be, you know, that, but that's, you, you can find a lot of information about the sport there.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll go on, excuse me for being so uninformed about this, um, but if, if I wanted to go out there and play, do I have to pack my own stuff with me or is it all?
Yes, and so part of this would be also be that, you know, we would like to put up an informational board that shows the layout, you know, where a whole one is, how to get around the course with a list of the rules. And part of that as well would be, uh, what we would like to do, I would personally donate discs to put in a basket there that you could take on the course, play the course when you get done, you could sanitize that disc and put it back in the box for someone else to use. Um, a lot of courses utilize that, but as you get, you know, get better at the sport, you progress in the sport, um, you obviously you'd want to buy your own supplies as well, but all you need, really need is one disc to play the sport. Um, I would like to mention that it could be as easy as that, you take one disc out with a kid and have a good time playing. Or it could be as, as professional as, um, there's a guy that just signed a ten million dollar contract, uh, to play disc golf. Um, so it's a very big sport. It's actually one of the fastest growing sports in the country right now. Actually in the world, I should say.
That's very interesting. So, LeWan did, uh, the, has it, um, how has it impacted our fields and everything? Is it more, uh, maintenance that's been required or?
It's just, I mean, all it is is, is you've got the tee pads, the tee pads are actually just concrete pads and then you have a basket that's just on a post stuck in the ground, maybe around, maybe concrete around the post. Um, outside that's just a dish and in theory you would bring your own dish, but if we had to play in a basket, it's a dish and they were some folk running the, they make this, you know, and I say that dish is gonna stay there.
Yeah, sure, yeah, we understand that too.
Yeah, I said it'll stay there, but I mean, it's, it's, they, if you're nice and if someone put a merry case, some of the folks are gonna get one place they didn't have. Yeah, so, but. The, the doors, more or less, is just tee pads, carpet pads and that.
How big an area, how big an area of decision complex?
Acres.
How big would acres be?
It's, uh, I was that back part, so would you say that's, uh, in acres, maybe? Is it that big? Bigger?
Yeah, but it, you know, like I say, it's just a, it's just a back, it's, it's just going back in the back. It's not, I mean, as far as the, so, so far as the upkeep, it's just really good.
And also I would say the beauty of disc golf is, is it utilizes a portion of the, of the sports complex that otherwise wouldn't be utilized and it uses, uses the terrain as part of the challenge of the course. So, it really uses the big, huge soccer trees and beautiful, you know, trees that we have in those, in the landscape that we have there to, to play the game. So, it's really utilizing the space that otherwise wouldn't get utilized at all.
I'm all for tournaments, um, for eleven years, right? And push the tournaments in our beautiful sports complex, so it's another thing that would bring, uh, tournaments and, um, you know, bring people in that would spend their money here and then, and I'm not being a.
You be working with LaWanda?
Oh, yeah. I, I mean, I, if the board is okay, I'll work with staff to, you know, potentially get this on another. And get some more details and get this on another. Again, uh, in regard to funding.
Yeah, just let us know what grant opportunities or, or just what's there.
Thank you all for coming.
Hey, thank you guys.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Number eight.
Chris Langston.
President.
Coastline Environment.
Just put those informational packages together before we turn the workshop. I'm here to address the, uh, county accounting board about a, uh, request being, uh, made by Liberty County to Taylor County. And I'm gonna read this letter. Uh, Liberty County Commissioner's request to support Taylor, Taylor Board of County Commissioners to assist in our attempt to obtain state unproperty located in Tayside State Forest, specifically the southeast corner of Liberty County for the purposes of mining fossilized shale to assist in the restoration of Oyster Reef Complexes in Apalachicola Bay. Two thousand and ten and eleven, state of Florida allowed an unregulated oyster harvest here in the BP oil spill would penetrate toward coastal waters. This one time relaxation of regulations led to an overharvest, which decimated Apalachicola Bay's oyster habitat. State of Florida has since closed Apalachicola Bay for oyster harvests, severely impacting coastal community. Restoration of this critical resource is vital, is vital to communities in our area to expand the industry to commercial and sport fishermen, oyster farmers in our community and overall, uh, economy. The state of Florida has utilized fossilized shale and blue line from Kentucky, with fossilized shale having the best results. The most successful example of this, of this technique was in two thousand fourteen fifteen. The Department of Natural Resources in the Chesapeake Bay area utilized over a hundred thousand cubic yards fossilized shale for cost deposition. These depositions outperformed all those materials used in the same application. Chesapeake Bay is now experiencing a dramatic increase in oyster densities, producing the best blue for our harvest in over a decade in addition to better water quality in the bay. In this landmine proposal, the primary purpose and use of fossilized shale is, is to restore Apalachicola Bay's struggling wild oyster habitat in our area. This mineral has proven effective in restoration projects located in other areas and could be used for here. While we understand that the results of an ongoing FSU restoration study will drive future efforts by putting steps in motion now, we can be in a position to capitalize on those results. Liberty County Commissioners recognizes that this will be a long process, probably involving land swaps. Still, our first step is to show the community support of this project. And that's why I'm here tonight is to ask this board to support Liberty County's efforts. As you can see in there, there's a PowerPoint presentation, uh, right after the question letter I've just read. And then further on in there, you'll see a small flow, uh, single page flow sheet, uh, how the mining process goes right into the bay. And then followed by, uh, Harris Creek, Choctaw, Chesapeake Bay area, uh, some of them, most recent results using fossilized shale. And then of course, finally, in the, uh, package, you'll see accompanied by the letters we've been able to obtain from various other counties. And I'll take any questions if you've got any.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, does Tayside Management Plan allow for mining?
It does not. Actually, what it does, let me explain, uh, land swap. Tayside Management Plan, the land swap that I swapped with, I'm gonna buy a tract of land. It's gonna be on a one and a half to one ratio. And to use round numbers, let's say I will buy six hundred and swap to four hundred, okay? When I swap that land, the state's management plan will then go to that land that I swapped with, not the land I swapped for. Actually, let me found and swapped for, with the land delivered to some of the shell. There's not, there's not a state management plan to it.
Does FWC have seventeen million to restore the Apalachicola Bay with?
FWC, FSU got like twenty from golf or thirty from golf, trying out another plane from FWC. And when this letter was written, we were under the impression that FSU was gonna be the resource manager, but it's really FWC. Now, as for money, I'm not sure what FWC has for the restoration efforts. I do know that a bid just went out and they are planning on large scale restoration efforts utilizing the same blue line from Kentucky.
I, 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 I've been told, I would think you would know, that if they would have seventeen million dollars that they, uh, that they're gonna use to restore Apalachicola Bay, especially.
There's a, there's a, there's a lot of, lot of money, uh, and it's going into various, various agencies.
Okay, so if this, if this mining project were, were to happen, wouldn't the state get a large percent of the profit due to the state mineral rights?
No, they haven't got that. What I plan on doing is the way the, the, I guess you could say the royalty, the royalty would go to the county. State's not, you know, the state will get to use the material, but state's not, I'm not leasing from the state. I'm swapping land with the state. And with that land swap with Liberty County, Liberty County would actually be the owner of said land. They would be the recipient of the loyalty.
Do you have a financial statement, sir, that we could look at?
No, I don't.
Sir?
No.
I, 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 I just want the board to know I've talked with people in Franklin County. They're against this. Uh, the ones that I've talked to, they do not want this. Um, they say the fossil shells have helped in some cases and they've hurt at other, at other times. But, but the biggest, the biggest question that I have is why in the world would we, Taylor County, support something like this that could very well be in competition with our own mines? We've got mines in, in Taylor County. So why would we be part of something that would, that would be in competition with something in Taylor County? That would hurt us. Um, I know that, that our mines sell to Franklin County. And I've, this is in my district and I've got people, uh, I know around Nuttall and also a river that are employed with Martin Marietta. And I certainly wouldn't wanna hurt any of these companies, our local companies, that would cause anybody to perhaps lose their jobs. So, um, I just, um, uh, and like I said, Franklin County gets rock from us. So I'm gonna tell you something, we don't have a bit of business in the world getting involved with this. This is something we don't need to touch. This is, this is a business, something else. We do not need to endorse this. We need to leave this alone. We don't have no business getting into this.
Those mines in Martin Marietta, Tom Brad Youngton, formerly Young, they are primarily for the purposes of road construction, other construction materials. They're not in the business for habitat restoration. The mineral makeup of this land, I'm saying here locally, uh, wouldn't work in the bay very well. That's the reason why it varies. You know, you don't have any limestone going out there. This is not for competition. I'm not going into competition with Martin Marietta. That's the last thing I wanna do. What we're trying to do is, we still have Apalachicola Bay and all of Florida's habitat. And Commissioner Franklin County voted just a couple weeks ago to support this operation.
People I've talked to, the residents are not for it. And they, they did talk about, uh, you know, a lot of questions are being asked. And they're concerned about their well water with this kind of mining and all kind of other things. So I am absolutely not, and, and why does Taylor County need to get involved in this? I don't think this is any of our business.
I talked to some of the same people you must have talked to. I got several phone calls about this. Nobody was for it. It was all against it. I mean, I don't know that much about that area where it's mined. I do know a little bit about that county mine. And, but, uh, far as I'm concerned, we need to keep our hand out of that pot, far as I'm concerned. And that's just me talking. I'm, I'm, I'm still looking. I got to read through this thing and study it and see what, you know, what, what deal is on it. But, uh, and right this time, I'm, the fellow that I talked to is against it, you know? Nobody that called me was for it, that's for sure, you know?
That had any call to that nature, but I mean, I don't, I don't know nothing about it, uh.
Understood. I can say this, that's the cause. It is not, it doesn't have any solution channels. And I know that one person, one person is saying that back in the day, I was the original mine operator. And, um, she's trying to save that money at the well. I can say that she lives three and a half miles away. As a crow flies over five miles as a car drives, and I can, it's impossible. It's not improbable. It's impossible. Uh, and she put her, you know, where she put her well, I don't know, but I can say if, if the well got muddy, it was fracture enough in this operation. And it's just not in that line.
Well, as, as I learn more about the operation and the effects, you know, I, I, today, I'm not gonna say I'd be in support of it, but I'm not saying I wouldn't support it either on.
Okay.
About it today, but really.
Understood.
Yeah, I do understand that some of those deposits of, of that resource are not iron rock based. It's more of a shale type rock. So it's not something that I familiar with that would be in competition to, um, Taylor County Mine Operations where it's Martin Marietta or the other mines. But I don't have enough information honestly to, um, say for sure that I could support that. But, um, I, I will say that I would like to see the restoration there to, um, that industry. So that part of it, I think, could be a plus, but I would certainly like to have more information to be able to have a more, independent opinion about that. But I do understand some of those deposits. I'm not sure how much acreage that you have to have there. How, uh, willing is, you know, are the groups, groups there with Tayside? Are they entertaining that notion to be able to swap?
I don't know yet. That's what we're doing now.
We're not sure that you can secure.
Exactly right. We're, this is, this is first step. Uh, I, you know, we are, uh, through Liberty County and myself. Uh, we're, but we're reaching out to all the, all the counties that border basically Apalachicola Bay and border Liberty County itself, reaching out to local support. So when I go see that young lady that was here earlier, you know, she sees the people in our district support that operation. So it's gonna have to go to the governor and cabinet. Uh, of course, I'll try to reach out to CFO to see if, you know, I believe that's under his purview. Uh, but it's just, it's one of those things that right now, we're at the first step. First step is local support.
Uh, but the county, Liberty County is seeking to swap actual county property or state property.
What'll happen is, is I'm gonna, they don't have the revenue. I'm gonna buy tract of land adjacent to, do the land swap. And then we're gonna go in kinda like tenants in common and kinda be joint owners. But because of their part, uh, participation, that we're gonna pay them a royalty on gross sales.
Okay. So that, that would be a full profit effort then?
Absolutely.
I don't know nothing about it. I'm just gonna play with you.
Understood.
Yes.
Yeah, appreciated. Okay. And you all have a good evening.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Number nine, Victor Blenker, marina, to discuss the memorandum of understanding.
Maybe the commissioners, sorry to interrupt you. Um, yeah, like, um, a couple of, over a month and a half ago, I was approached by one of the members of, um, Anderson, Columbia with a proposal to create a new offshore artificial reef. Um, we have discussed from this board previously about the possibility to create new artificial reef for the county, but especially for inshore artificial reef for each of anglers. Uh, this is still in our to-do list. We have done a couple of things forward to, to move that forward. But it's still two or three years ahead. Anyway, um, the thing is that they approached us because when they contact the Corps of Engineers, the only agencies that can get a permit to have, uh, an artificial reef is, uh, the state agencies, counties, or cities, or NTOs, or universities. So no private, uh, corporation can have a permit to have like private artificial reef site. So the interest is that they have, um, materials that they are willing to use to create this artificial reef. The proposal is to have, um, a really offshore artificial reef. This is sixty miles offshore. Uh, Boca Reef, which is the one that we currently have, and we are currently in the process to get an, uh, a new permit because the permit expired September twenty ninth last year. And we are requesting an expansion of four square miles of that, uh, artificial reef. And also we have been creating or monitoring program, uh, with divers, within training, dive, volunteer divers going in the water, collecting information and sharing that information of the structure of fish population in the artificial reef back to our angler communities and then renewing things in Haci and other, um, um, interest parties. So that information is available. I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for the county. Um, uh, what I did, my suggestion, you know, when I discussed that with LaWanda was to maybe send the memorandum of understanding to Mr. Bishop for his review. I think it's very important to, to hear what he has to say on the, um, uh, on the way that the memorandum of understanding is set, uh, if, if it is a draft. This company already has a memorandum of understanding with Dixie County, which with, uh, also they are in the process to get a permit for a new artificial reef in their federal waters about the same sixty miles offshore Dixie. Um, and, uh, in the, in documents that I sent for, for you, there is a couple of draft of the, the, the way that's gonna work. One of my first questions to them was, okay, so what's the county gonna get? If, because we're gonna be the permit holders, so we're gonna be in charge of that. In that case, uh, I'm basically the, the content person who will make sure that we follow every, um, we comply with the permits, that everything has to be in the waterways and in these days in, in the ocean. So what I request was, as we have our monitoring program, uh, we want to, in return, um, Anderson, Columbia, at least to fund, um, if they could, have the funding to do the, the county or to the Terrence Reef Research Team, or they could pay by their own means, um, our activities for monitoring at least five times per year in that, uh, new artificial reef or in Boca or in all other artificial reefs that we have here in the county. Uh, that's not part of memorandum, memorandum of understanding. I think LaWanda made that, uh, note. I think that's, that's important to be somehow reflect in the scope of this MOU. Uh, but I, I think, um, based on discussions I have had with some offshore, uh, charter captains, uh, basically they use, they're using Boca Reef as an, uh, location where they take, uh, their charter to, to catch fish. But they, uh, they go more offshore because they're targeting especially, um, red snapper. So when the red snapper is on, they really love to go offshore and they mean forty, fifty or sixty miles offshore, uh, to target, um, the, the red snapper. So it, it makes sense for the county, I think. Uh, this is something that you might think about. I'm no pro, not against. Uh, I think it's, it's a good opportunity that we're having on the table. And of course, we will continue to try to get, get grant funding through FSU artificial reef program that we apply. And of course, we will continue to try to get, get grant funding through FWC Artificial Reef Program that we apply. Every year, this year, I didn't send an application because our um, permit had expired. But I really would do it next year to, to get grant, grant potential for new deployments. Uh, we have been doing so, um, if, if you have any question, I'd be glad to, to share that with you.
I got some question.
Yeah, sure.
Whereabouts, were they thinking about establishing this reef that out there, whereabouts, how far offshore, and in what areas?
Uh, it's, it's gonna be uh, sixty miles offshore, uh, there is a diagram in, in the documentation that I sent. It's about, uh, I think it's ninety feet deep, I mean, um, hot ninety feet deep.
Yeah, that, that right there is what I've been talking about shallow water reef for years.
Yeah.
And we've got deep water reefs and we got rock formations out in that deep water. We need some shallow water reefs in Tana County where the average person's boat could get there, they don't have to have a big offshore boat. To get, to get out there, we talking about, you don't have to have a high-dollar boat. We need some shallow water reefs is what we need to, yeah. Now, I've been talking about that to you ever since you've come here, we.
Yeah, yeah, and I already have, we have identified with some of the uh, captains, uh, three potential sites. Uh, the thing is that with the uh, aquatic preserve of all these seagrass plants, it's, it's really difficult to, to really get uh, a spot. So we already have these three potential sites, uh, we already purchased uh, a site scan, uh, it's not a site scan, it's, it's just a regular scan that both use. But um, we are gonna collect some information with that, and we're gonna get um, software to create our own uh, bottom surveys. Uh, because these areas are so large that diving is, is not working, we, we can do the diving to, you know, certify that if, if it's sandy bottom or not. But to do the bathymetry, which is like the topography of the bottom of the ocean, uh, we need this, this type of equipment. So we already invest in that equipment, I have it in my office. Uh, but of course, we need to rent a boat or to, uh, I'm thinking maybe uh, talk to the um, chief of the fire department to use their uh, steam boat uh, to, to install this equipment, uh, so we can go out in the water and collect the data in the shallow water.
We've been talking about it for years, what I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Something, you know, I'd love to see that happen where more people could utilize it than just a few people well, sure, is what.
I understand, I understand.
That's me, and then, um, another question for you, what happened in Springwater about the no-boat firm, stuff like that?
Uh, it, I, I received a call from the contractor, and they had a really uh, difficult time to get the barge to go through the, the closer some to the ramp because of, of the rocks, I, I don't know if it was a matter of with the tide. Uh, so they have to take their barge out, uh, they haven't uh, report back if they're gonna have another solution. That's what I asked them to say, well, if you cannot get a barge in, is there all the way that you can, you know, from land, have another type of machinery that you can drill? The thing is that they need to have the, uh, certain equipment in the water to drill to, through the bedrock and install these poles to have the signs on.
We've, it's been about a two-year process trying to get that sign there, and I was just kinda wondering, wh-what's the next step? Are they gonna try to come back and do it, or they need to get a different rig, or?
I'm, I'm waiting for their feedback on that, on how they're gonna solve that situation. Yeah, I, I, I need to like forever first to get the quotes from contractors. Uh, and then to uh, get the permits through FWC again, because we had to do all the inspections. Get the feedback from FWC and then get the quotes and then buy the supplies and then get the contractor, the, the purchases are for the contractors.
You, you got supplies now, but they.
We have everything.
And all we need is a whole rig.
That's right, that's right. So they're, they, uh, they report, they already finished with the Steen Hatchie and Eka Fina, uh, which they were placing new buoys and straightening up some of the sign, changing some of the signs that were faded. Uh, so all that is ready, uh, and they, I think they installed the buoys in, in spring water, but they just need to finish the sign by the boat.
What, what situation is, FWC can't write a ticket or a warning, can we get both signs out? We've got one sign up, and people pay a little bit of attention to it, but when they leave the boat ramp, they need to be able to see a sign, no way.
That's right.
And if they could put up a temporary sign or whatever to get that, where FWC could do their job, I mean, I, I get calls every week about that down.
Yeah.
People's got their boats tied up, they're floating dogs, people flying by, and just don't care if they're boating, I'm just off the dock or whatever, you know. And I mean, I, it's been a long time, I, I, I appreciate you putting a special effort in getting that process completed.
Yeah, I did a consultation with FWC about a temporary, and unfortunately, that's not possible.
Not possible?
No. We, are we doing the way, is in the permit, or we cannot do it?
They have caused us issues for the last two years back before, and, and if I'd have known, they were saying it was not possible to have a temporary. I, I can call somebody, try to get some different information on that, that don't make any sense in the past. We used, the county used to give us no-boat signs, we put them up in the wrong place, they give, they, you know, we gotta clear with the county. We went out there and put posts down and put signs up ourselves, back they, in the days in the past. Next day, we see had the GPS readings right where they wanted to put the sign, we put them there, you know, so, I mean, we.
Yeah, I don't know if it's the, the, the staff who is giving the feedback, they have a different approach on, on the way they interpret the, the, the.
I know, 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 we don't need to wait another year.
Yeah, actually, I, I remember in Kita Beach, for example, I, I took picture of one sign that was on a dock. And uh, the person from FWC said they need to remove that because the dock is on the water. And it's unlawful to have that sign on the water, even if it's on the dock. So, yeah, yep, yeah, they can write a ticket, it's adorable, they can get a citation. They don't do it, maybe they don't enforce it, because they understand that it, it's, it is needed. But, but uh, at least we have our signs of.
Like we're quite fine, we're.
But maybe what we can do is ask to put it right there on land, maybe not in the water, but on land, temporary, on land, we can do that.
Well, I'd love to see that done, but we could get that done, if we could just, you know, do a hole there and put it where they could see it from the boat ramp. And that's solve that issue where FWC could do their job. But now they put down floating buoys on, with weights on, and it seems like they could have put that sign on one of their floating buoys and anchored it right there where it needs to be, that, I mean, you know, it'd come and go with the tide, but it always, always be down in it.
Always for something else.
Yeah. But, can I follow in behind that, please?
Yeah, yep, I will follow up on that then.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Uh, one question.
Go ahead.
I'm not trying, no, maybe. In respect of this, this Anderson reef, I guess, proposed, that, that's gonna be sixty miles out. So it's gonna be in somewhat of the same proximity with the Boca Reef?
No, Boca Reef is twenty, twenty-one miles.
Okay, so this whole proposal is all a new proposal?
Is that completely new proposal?
Yeah, I, I question, there, I guess there's some, I guess, requests as to what the county's gonna get from Anderson beyond this, that you're the holder of the permit, I guess.
Yes.
Has there been any kind of concession about that or discussion?
No, no, this is the first time we tried to, I don't know if you have any feedback that you want to, or, we can read the, the representative of Anderson Columbia. Is there any idea?
Well, we're asking at least for the cost to monitor.
Yeah.
The, the uh, the reef, so it's not a burden on county's budget, and they have agreed in theory, I think, to that. But I don't think there are any other costs, except for the monitoring.
No, no, actually, for the permitting process, Anderson Columbia is gonna contract a consulting firm to do the whole process. And if there is a cost, they will cover that cost.
Okay.
Yeah. But of course, the final application for that permit has to be approved by the board on a board meeting.
Which will cover all the costs incurred. Now with that, in respect to Commissioner Moody, would Anderson be interested in having with something that wasn't as much of a, a deep-water reef? That, I mean, have you got that kind of discussion? I'm not opposed to what Commissioner Moody's saying.
I, I, I brought it into the, in the conversation, and um, their interest is really to have these offshore because of the type of materials that they handle. You know, they, they commissioned bridges and road, big materials, uh, so in shallow waters, I don't think that would work.
Would, would they have resources for something that might, that might work? That's, that's my question.
Yeah, yeah, maybe it's part of that material, if we can deploy part of that material in the new permit area in Boca Reef. That's something that we, they, they have tons of material available, so.
Now, you're just thinking, would they have something that would be suitable for this kind of inshore? When they reach across Southeast?
When we go through the permitting process for an inshore, then we will need to see what the Corps of Engineers, uh, type of material they will allow in that specific area, because that changes depending on depth of, the type of, of uh, bottom, uh, the bottom type in the ocean. So they will say, well, you can use modules, or you can use uh, boulders, or you can use uh, scrap metal or not, or secondary-use concrete, like culverts, stuff like that. Um, but that will depend on what the Corps decides.
So we're still somewhat trying to understand the regulations or requirements for that?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Or is it trying to understand what the requirements would be from the Army Corps of Engineers?
For an inshore?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with, with that, because uh, the, the thing what, what I have explained to, to Commissioner Moody is that uh, here i- in, in Taylor County, we need to deal with the seagrass, and that's a big thing. Uh, for inshore, we are thinking about three, four, maybe no more than six miles offshore. That's where our inshore anglers go. And basically, the seagrass goes to six, up to five, up to seven uh, miles offshore. So uh, it's very little space for us to, to request a, a new area for an artificial reef.
Because we have to avoid the seagrass area, okay?
By law, it is impossible, the seagrass is, is protected, and so there's no way we can place anything.
There are places out there that are no seagrass, when you fly over, if you can see spots where.
Yes, 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 and that's what the, some of the charter captains have helped me with to locate, they have provided me with coordinates and say, hey, here is a spot that you should look at.
You can actually see it on Google.
Yes, in some places.
In some places where, and then you go to those places out there, you'll have a sand bottom, and if you go down to the bottom right there, the rocks right there are it, is the reason. There's no, you know.
That's, that's the only, we, we need to go and do a survey inside uh, to see how thick is the sand on that location. Because we don't want, when we place the, the, the material, we don't want the material to subset on, on, in the sand and very under the sand.
It's gonna sink right down to the rock.
Yeah, yeah.
The fish, the fish will be there in a week's time, you put something out there, you go back a week later, and there'll be fish there, and they'll be fanning it, and it'll be going down. Years ago, I've seen people put stuff out there, and a week's time, you can go back to it, and there'd be fish on it, and it would be leveling out, sand, sand would be, there'd be fish, that'd be fanning the sand away from it. It'll sit down in the bedrock, you know.
So what about the Steen Hatchie Reef, that they call, I mean, it's, that reef is in eighteen, twenty-foot of water, there's, there's culverts. On the Steen Hatchie Reef?
Yeah, the Steen Hatchie Reef, the permit holder is at University of Florida. And that was part of a large uh, research uh, made by Dr. Bill Limber, who was standing for almost thirty years. The recruitment of Cat Cooper, how, how he was moving from the offshore fishing stop to, you know, the spawning areas and the recruiting areas where the juvenile scroll, and then they go back offshore. So they, there, there is a very big uh, structures, there's a lot of structure out there regarding the Steen Hatchie Reef. But that's under University of Florida, and that permit expired. So I'm not sure I can ask if uh, if the county can request to, to reprimand that under the umbrella of the, of the county. But I don't think that's possible, but I just need to ask.
Well, man, I'll say, I'm, I'm not opposed to your proposal at the, with the reef at sixty miles offshore. I mean, basically, you're running a, probably about a two-forty going straight out of the, you're Keating Beach, I'm not opposed to, to, you know, potentially forming this reef in ninety-foot of water. There are a lot, there are a lot of good benefits to these reefs, with the, you know, these fisheries across the board, with these, you know, commercial fishermen, and even these charter fishermen. Be able to take folks out, but I am, you're along with Commissioner Moody, the, you know, we really need to push hard for some inshore, you know, reefs to benefit. I mean, there's probably more people fishing inshore, when you go, when you put you.
Yes, yes.
Man, there's, there's, there's probably a hundred people fishing inshore, or ten people going offshore, but they just can't go. So, but I mean, more, more reasons, I, I, I say along the lines of the Steen Hatchie Reef, you know, I think the Steen Hatchie Reef does a whole lot of fish. And you, you, you put something down out there, it's gonna attract the fish, whether it's on sand or grass, I mean, it's gonna attract the fish. So I think we need to, there need to be a big effort, you know, into pushing for this shallow water reef.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna work on that harder this year, uh, as I said, I'm gonna contact Chief uh, Cassell to see if we can install the device on their boat, and I can do this, the bottom survey with their boat. That will save us a lot of time, uh, because that's a requirement when we send the application for idea reef. We need to make sure we're, we're being, we're selecting the right spot for an artificial reef.
When do you think we can get an update on that happen?
Uh, I, if, if uh, Chief Cassell says that, that's okay, we can go next week. I have the equipment at my office, it's just a matter of putting, installing the, the equipment and going in the water. I will stand and agree, we're using GPS coordinates, and, and we will scan the whole area, and then, as I mentioned, we'll have a software. We download all that information, then we make a map out of it. And with that map, we just go again, we do some diving to certify, you know, verify some of these parts, the, the bottom type. And with that information, we can start preparing the application, and even before the year, we can be sending an application.
I know there are a couple of captains down at these beaches that, they probably can take you right to some of the cut bottom that you want.
Yes.
In that depth of water, you know, it's not necessarily anything that would, you know, do, be a lot of business, so to speak, but you know, they, a lot of these guys are crap in this depth of water. So I mean, they know the bottom, they know where, they know where the good bottom is that you're looking for, or sandy bottom, the rock, your flat rock bottom. So you may reach out somebody who's, 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 when they do it here today, they're, they're actually answer good.
There is more, more criteria they have that is involved in selecting the site, uh, that, because we have to have a clearance from the top of the material that we're gonna uh, deploy to the mean water level. So we need to go at least twelve to fifteen feet in order to, you know, to make it uh, uh, safe for, for boulders, right? Uh, and have some material that will make room for, for the fish to, that will attract fish and everything. Oh, oh, yeah, I'm, and I'm in contact all the time with the FWC Artificial Reef Program, uh, I always consult with them, uh. So um, I, I think we, we can move forward, if, if I can go in the water to get data, that will be fast. But without a boat, it's, it's already impossible to do it. All right, is there any other question or?
Well, thanks for your work, Becker, you've done good work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Right of time, the panel. Okay, go ten, board to discuss use, the, use.
USA CE.
Yeah, flood mitigation stuff.
Basically, Army Corps. So you should, it's, it's an acronym for the, uh, United States Army Corps of Engineers, USC. So you should have some information in your packet, um, there should be. So you should have some information in your packet. Um there should be a brochure that looks like this as well as some additional information. And Wanda just asked me to kind of give an update on what it is and where we are in the process of that. And essentially, as you'll see, there, the brochure kind of gives an overview of the Army Corps floodplain management, yes, sir, flood, floodplain management services program. This program, if you look at the second paragraph, it says, "The objective is to foster the public understanding for the options of dealing with flood hazards and to promote prudent use and management of the nation's floodplains." So essentially, this program is there to help assist uh public and private individuals for dealing with the nuances of what we have in abundance in that county is the floodplain areas. If you look down a little bit further, under the elements of the F P M S program, you'll see that they cover a full range of information, technical services, planning guidance, and assistance on floods and floodplain issues, all under the bridge umbrella of floodplain management. And then on the next page, uh you'll see that they have a listing of common activities that is included or expected through the floodplain management services program. And more notably, what the ones we are focusing on is in flood risk reduction and stormwater management. So the next um document that you have behind that brochure was the actual scope of work that we are going to be following um under this program. And these discussions started back in October of twenty nineteen with the Army Corps and we kind of um wanted to kind of, I'm not sure if Subs reached out to you or you reached out to him, but anyway, the two of them got together to where the awareness of this program and the potential benefit to the county became obvious. So we started that dialogue and kind of wanted to see what opportunities that we could capitalize on. It was not until nearly almost a year later that we actually had the first preliminary meeting in August of twenty twenty. And then um Mr. Subs forwarded a draft scope of work, which is what you're seeing in your packet here. I edited it and made it more appropriate for our needs and then submitted that back to them and then it was approved and submitted on um October of twenty twenty of last year. And from October twenty twenty till April of this year, there was some back and forth. Uh they had to, obviously, things were going on and we were trying to get everybody together, but we had a kickoff meeting in April of this year. And that was to kind of discuss what our expectation, expectations would be and what the Army Corps was intending to provide to us, as well as how long that might take and a, a potential cost as well. Then going back to that scope of work, this is the document that's gonna control our activities as well as the Army Corps' activity. And there's some initial stuff on that first page, but primarily, the second page is what we're really gonna focus on and that is the, under the, the heading of the planning efforts. We are hopeful that in the areas that we're looking at, we're going to get an idea or at least a concept of structural and non-structural measures which are gonna meet our, the, the objectives that we have for the different areas that we've identified. And I understand that this is at a concept level. This is not um physical final drawings that you're going to actually get out there and start digging a ditch. So if you look down there, they kind of um reiterate that and that, trying to emphasize this is a concept level design. Now, they're gonna go through quite a bit of analysis and um review of the information for the various areas that we have. But as I say, they're, they're going to undertake it for all the different areas, but as this is a concept level effort only, the design's gonna get into that thirty to forty percent completion um range. That's gonna be enough to at least get your order magnitude and somewhat reasonable cost estimates uh based on the information and the object, or the um conclusions that are reached for each of the areas and to start your permitting aspects of it, but it's not gonna be to where we could grab that package, put it on the agenda next week and say, we wanna advertise for this. So there's still gonna be additional work beyond that. But it's at least going to flush out the ones that this is feasible. Um this one, we should maybe pursue a little bit further or, you know, given the needs to, that would be required for this and the result that would be achieved as a result of that implementation, it's really not worth the money effort. So that's what we're gonna hopefully get when we get the end product from the Army Corps. And if you look on the very last page, um just like you were just talking about scheduling on the last item, from our kickoff meeting um to where we've provided them the various areas, our timeline for this with expected completion for a final report from the Army Corps is eighteen months. Now, what I have asked is, two of the first areas uh are down in and around Steen Hatchie. We have a road project that's going on in Steen Hatchie, right along First Avenue North. There is an opportunity to include uh structural elements that we anticipate being the, the object, the conclusion from the, that study in that area that we can incorporate into the road project. The timing would be really close. So what I've asked is that when they go through this project, because the way we prioritize it to piecemeal those results to us, we're not gonna ask for an official, formal published report, but give me what you find out. So just for an example, First Avenue North has a box culvert under between, I think it's Eighth and Park or something like that, Seventh, no, Sixth and Park, excuse me. Is that box culvert sufficient to convey the hundred-year flood stage without inundating or overtopping that roadway? Obviously, we know it's not today. So instead of the six foot tens or something like that that it is today, or six by eight, should we put another barrel there? They're going to determine that level of design when they analyze that. If they do that, then it makes the most sense for us um to include that as a structural component to our road construction project. So we know that we're gonna have to address that box culvert, given it's um too short, so we're gonna have widening aspects of it. We're already looking at whether or not it's more cost effective to remove that box culvert versus extending that box culvert. And once you do that, it, you get, you gain additional efficiencies for, it's cheaper, it's not fifty percent more to put a third barrel there than it is to put two barrels. So that's what I'm gonna try to capitalize on with them and I've asked um Melissa and Mr. Subs to say, as soon as you get something on this, let us have that, because we're expecting, you know, First Avenue design and the permitting is easily gonna go through the end of the year. So with that being known, there's a good chance that if we're talking the next six months and they're looking at trying to analyze ten different um areas, we're gonna catch the first one or first two in the beginning. Hopefully, they can accomplish that in a six-month timeframe. So that, that's just my objective there. And then the last line is, is you see that the study cost is estimated to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The joy of that is that none of that is coming from local dollars. All of that is a, an Army Corps-funded program.
Good.
We're really on the, the, the receiving, the good side of receiving in on this project. Um so the last, excuse me, the last page that you'll see in your um packet is a list of, they asked me to give them some areas that we were interested in, trying to analyze and see if there were solutions available to address some of those flooding issues. In typical fashion, we always ask for more than we really expect. Um so we went ahead and threw ten of them at them and, you know, if they can do all ten, fantastic. Yeah, if they can do five, we're still, we're still really to the good. So anyway, what you'll see there is a map, a map of ten different areas and they asked us to prioritize that to where they could address it from top down and then when the funding runs out, the funding runs out. But at least they are going to attack it with the ones that we feel have the greatest order of importance from, from top down. So what you can see is we've got a pretty good cross-section of the uh county as a whole. We look to, excuse me, the local mitigation strategy report. We also look to um various history of repeated areas where we've had to address, uh more notably, uh pumping efforts. You know, so if we can try to alleviate those issues, it's less of an obstacle for us to come the next flooding season. It's not gonna be yet, but we all know it's gonna be when. So that's, that was our objective. Uh when I say we, and Hank and I, we sat down and I would say, okay, where is it that you see, have seen problems here? We pull up the maps, look at the arrows and say, and turn on the visual elevation models and look for pockets of depression areas and make sure that we try to encompass that entire area. We captured all of that into shape files. We sent that to Army Corps. So they physically have our areas that we have expressed to them, we want you to look here. Uh they're doing that effort now. I haven't received any questions. We are fully um expecting that the result is gonna be something that we can come back to you and say, we feel that there are a lot of efficiencies to gain by implementing at least some of these. When we come back to you and ask for you to implement some of those, we all know that that comes with a cost. Um, you know, let's just say Thirteenth and Central, some of you are probably familiar with that area. It is a very bullish area. Um as soon as you turn off on Thirteenth off of First Avenue, you go straight down to the bottom where um Central Avenue crosses thirteen. It really has no outlet. So there is a possible solution to where, maybe you put an outfall there and then the closest proximity of something to alleviate that flooding would be, maybe you covered it over to the east and connect in with the river. That could easily top a couple hundred dam, maybe three hundred dam. So, you know, knowing that just that one work effort is gonna cost something along those order. Um Wanda asked me about the Recovery Act Plan dollars, uh because this type of solution that's gonna come out of this floodplain management services is the type of cost that was at least in part envisioned in that Recovery Act program. So what we're going to suggest to you is uh there is as much as or up to, I think, a four million dollar appropriation. Let's think about this. So if we're going to kind of get a result of this report in not December of this year, but December of next year, I'm, I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that Recovery Act dollars have to be expended by uh December of twenty twenty-four. And that gives us two full years to implement these different areas um and floodplain strategies, which should be ample time to do this. So I would just say, put it in the back of your mind, you know, let's think about that Recovery Act dollars and what is available, what is available for. This fits nicely into that. You know, we're gaining a lot of um luck here from US Army Corps and they're doing a lot of the grunt work for us. You know, once we get their results, then we can take that onto a completion level for actual either force, forced labor and house pi- activities or we will, you know, bid some of these stuff, depending on the complexity of what it is. Because the areas that we addressed in here go from large areas to some very much smaller areas.
You know, thi- this is what you just said is the answer to what we've been looking for. Um and the recovery money is, is uh, that's an ideal way to use that. Where else are we gonna get that kind of money to accomplish that, other than with that? So.
Yeah, I don't know, 'cause, you know, we do as much as we can with road, you know, addressing just the, the basins in and around the road, but you, you don't have that much fluff in a road to be able to span out very much.
Yeah, and, and, and you know, I, I know that we all have wish lists of things we would love to have, but this, in my opinion, is a necessity. Um and we've been looking at this for a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
And uh I don't think we'll ever have another opportunity like this to go ahead and fund such a project as this that's really needed.
It does seem like the stars aligned with these two. Um, you know, it was, like I said, it started back in twenty nineteen with some discussions. It didn't really come into play and come to fruition until this month. And now, well, it was only a month or two, maybe at the most, ago that you saw a possible funding source. The timing of those are overlapping to where it's a, it's a potential solution.
It's a wise and smart way to use it.
Yes, ma'am. I agree.
Now, so you got the number one and number two project is where we hear a lot talked about.
Yes, sir. Obviously, the, the uh number one that we listed there is the one I referred to at the, along First Avenue.
Yeah.
You know, and, and literally, it's just to make the best use of that road construction project instead of going through there, reconstructing that road, getting this result from, from this uh study effort and then the next, the year after that, going there and cutting that road out and redoing the box culverts. So that's why I asked them, you know, if there's any way possible, piecemeal those results to us. We'll push it through in the design and then we can do it all at one time and, and make it look like a finished product instead of having to tear into it.
Now, does, um, does that give, give you enough of time till twenty twenty-four to implement all of these things?
I think so. I don't think there's anything in here that would um exhaust a twenty-four month timeframe. Obviously, if we get this, um, I, I hope they're gonna start piecemealing all of it. That's what I'm kind of gonna ask for. And then just get a formal finished report at the end of the process. And if there's something that we see that uh we believe is something we want to pursue, then I would suggest maybe we begin that work effort to push it towards a finished product to where maybe you have it, you know, the term shuttle-ready, sitting there when your funding becomes available under the Recovery Act.
Yeah. Sounds good to me.
Yes, ma'am.
You have any?
I believe it's gonna help a lot of folks.
Yeah.
I still have some wide use of time, many funds and all of the above, so thank the Lord that all that's available. I mean, we'll certainly see a lot of folks benefited from hopefully not having flooded uh areas and allowing those waters to get to the places they need to be.
Yeah, it's just unfortunately, you know, that over time, Taylor, Taylor County is, as they call the Flatwoods for a reason. And over time, development has just pushed and encroached and built pretty much anywhere they could. And, you know, the dry season promotes short-term memory and we have these issues that have historically caused a lot of problems and there's at least a, a couple, if not several of these, that can alleviate ones that I know I keep hearing about nearly every um extended rain event that we get. So I'm all for passive measures. I don't think pumping is a necessity. I don't think pumping is a wide use of our funds. If we can put in a passive measure that is, you know, gravity-driven or just out-hauls your culverts, it's something that, you know, doesn't require a maintenance effort for us and, you know, we don't see that. We could focus our efforts on people at that point in time instead of worrying about, okay, we'll get the pumps out.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
But are you, are you gonna be here for item number um twelve? I was gonna say, if you are, I was gonna ask, can we move that next? But if you're leaving, I suppose.
What is number twelve? Kind of minimum policy.
You're gonna be here for that? Is it, would it be okay, Mr. Chair, if we went ahead and did that while he's here so that he can go home? Or you stay if you want to?
I believe it's next, isn't it? Like when you're on the stairs.
The American Rescue Plan is funded is the next.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can move it.
Could we skip that and let, can I, you know, so he can go home?
No, we can't. Oh, no, 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 no. I'm, I'm, I'm fully fine. I was just trying to segue into the recovery plan because I knew she was gonna pick up on some of that and finish it out. But I just was trying to tie it into this floodplain management study so that you could see there's, there's a lot of relationship there.
I think he wanted to stay for that discussion anyway, for the rescue plan.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to help you out.
Uh so just to review the American Rescue Plan, uh the US Department of Treasury has released an interim final rule which lays the initial framework for expen- which lays the initial framework for expending the county's portionment of American Rescue Plan funding. Uh, Taylor County has allotted almost 4.2 million dollars. Um, it is important to note that Treasury has not released final guidance as of yet, which can be expected sometime in July or August. We are in the 60-day comment period right now. I know that there are a lot of questions about the possible uses of the funding. So sometime in July or August, I would expect that we would receive the final guidance along with the FAQs. That will help us a lot to know what we can really spend these funds on. In the interim, I, I have given you a handout that goes through the uses of the funding, but, um, we can use it to support public health expenditures, um, address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, replace lost public sector revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Um, we can use that to make necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water, support bottle wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, and to expand access to broadband internet. I know that in the past that we have tried to use the CARES Act funds to help our community and to give individual assistance and small business assistance. The only caution that I would provide to you about, um, about opening that up to, um, to help individuals and individual assistance is that we have to be very aware of duplication of benefits. And, um, and some of the calls I've been on, we've been cautioned that unless we have a mechanism in place to make sure there is not a duplication of benefits, we would be in danger of having to repay funds.
No duplication.
We cannot duplicate benefits. And I do, from what I understand, there will be state programs to help with rental assistance, mortgage assistance, and possibly utility assistance. So we just have to be very cautious of that. And I'm not necessarily trying to lead you down a certain path. I just want you to be aware of that.
Well, you know, we, we tried our best to spend what we have and, and what could. So, um, I, I, I just don't see why we would open those doors again, particularly if you, what you're saying is there may be state assistance. Um, I would not be in favor of that.
I understand. Um, so our next step really at this point is to consider if you wish to hire a consultant to assist with grant administration. Historically, we have hired a consultant for treasury monies because they can be difficult. I would say that I, I believe that we could enter into a contractual agreement with a consulting firm that would not give them a, an allocation, a percentage of the funding, but they would receive reimbursement for time spent, um, assisting us with technical advice or with actual grant administration.
Okay, so if, if we did choose to, to put the money toward the, um, flooding issues, we need a consultant to help us with that?
That would only.
Couldn't manage that?
The only, I would say, it would only be to help us with grant administration. So that would be submitting reimbursement requests and, and things of that nature. I don't think that, um, it really, I'm sure it would be limited to technical advice or technical assistance.
I, I just, I don't, I wouldn't want to spend another 200 or more thousand, hundred thousand dollars.
And I would not anticipate that it would, it would be that much. I just, I just don't know at this time. And then there's a possibility, I would say, if, if the, if the, if the nature of the final guidance is more complicated than what we are hoping, we may need some assistance with that. I, I just don't want us to be in a position where we have to pay funding back. And so that's, that's the only concern I have.
Okay, so with our, our grant staff, Melanie, for instance, is, is, is this beyond, um, what she would be able to?
I don't, I don't know that it is, but I can say that historically that we have, um, utilized consulting firms to help us with projects such as this. Um, the railroad grant, grant is an example of when we have utilized a consultant just recently with our CARES Act funds. I honestly cannot envision that we would have realized the full allocation without some of the expert help that we have.
And I, I, uh, looking back on that, I absolutely, I think they were beneficial. Just, just questioning, you know, if, if this is something.
You sure you get your bang for your buck?
That's, there you go. Thank you, Commissioner.
But that's okay. Well, I mean, I'm glad you're doing this. Hey, drill what you have to do. You say it here and you get it out all plain and prompt, then you don't have no backup.
As a consultant would identify key areas. I mean, we, we know we got a good area that Mr. Dudley has just identified. We don't know what that cost would actually be. So, is what, four billion dollars probably?
Yes, sir. I'll ask for one too.
A consulting firm would help identify additional key areas and spend, spend the funds.
Yes, sir. If that's what we ask them to do.
And, well, you know, you got day-to-day operation, you and your group got day-to-day operation. And this is something, if we wasn't getting the four million dollars, we wouldn't need any of that. So if we get the four million dollars.
It's just a consideration. I would, I would like to explore what other counties are doing. I did ask that, that question, um, about what most counties are doing. And it really just depends on the potential projects. Um, so I would think that if, if, we already have guidance from the board that we want an infrastructure project, this seems very straightforward. I, I would not anticipate that we would have to rely on a consultant other than to hustle, possibly help us with reporting and to help us interpret guidance. But, um, just working through the CARES Act funds, I would have been, um, I'm just afraid we could have made some mistakes if we didn't have that expert guidance.
And that's, I'm not saying, uh, listen, I'm not saying that, that I'm against a consultant. I just think that it's my duty to ask questions because just as sure as next week's come, next week comes, somebody out there is going to ask me, well, well, you know, just like they recently have asked me. And so, you know, I just want to be able to, um, you know, say staff recommends big calls. And so that, that's.
And I will be participating in some conference calls. I know that another county has already reached out to me and said, what are you, are you hiring someone? What are you doing? I, I mean, I think there is just a sense of what do we need to do? Because this is just new to a lot of us. But I would like to gather some further information and bring it up back to the board. I would, um, I would say that, um, our first step is to, to request that first 50%. Um, we are eligible now. Um, we have not gone through the whole process to request the funds yet because even the process to request the funds is quite complicated. Um, we will work on that this week. Once we have that funding secure, um, then I would say it would be maybe another, you know, 30, 60 days where we will receive the final guidance. Once we receive the final guidance, I think we'll be in a better position to develop a list of projects. Um, we just really wanted to make sure that we brought this opportunity to you now that Kenneth and I have discussed it and identified it. And it does seem like the timing is, is perfect. Um, but if you have any other ideas, that's something that we can discuss at a later time when I receive the final guidance and then, and then go from there if, if you're okay with that.
When you deal with government money, consultants always pay off the same body they make. They know the ins and outs that we might miss. And, 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 and it'll give her a little more breathing room not to have to fall in, try to find out what the consultant's already made, you know? And, and we, we could miss some things without a consultant.
Well, the good thing about this particular opportunity is that we're not in a rush to spend it. And I will say that with the CARES Act funds, there was such a, um, there was such a sense of urgency to develop a plan and to expend it and to get the money back. And it wasn't until we were complete, we completed the process that we found out we had an additional year. But we're so far ahead because we've already submitted our closeout report. So, you know, that's just less work that we had to do on our end because we tackled it on the front end. This is a little different because we have time and we have time to research and hopefully, um, you know, learn as much as we can before we even started spending the money.
I mean, I, I agree. And this is really different from the first time. And, uh, again, we don't, we don't want to do something and we've got to turn around next year and pay it back.
That's my, that's my biggest concern, right? Especially if we pledge money that we hadn't planned to spend and then we have to pay it back. That just makes it worse. Okay. All right, thank you.
Moving right along. Going to discuss county Midland policy? Is that where we are?
So, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I've had several conversations in respect to the Midland policy and what they want to have. And it makes most sense to have this discussion with board and our engineers taking part in that with the Public Works Director and Mr. Wong, of course. This policy, as I understand, and I believe everybody has copied, um, as I can see here, was somewhat developed for large-scale projects. And most recently, I've been asked as far as possibility to help reduce the lime rock dust. And I'm sure everybody understands how dry it is on our lime rock or dirt roads. There are residents that have their homes that are within a close proximity of the roads. And they'd like the option of, have asked for millions to be put there. This policy, I don't believe, is, is to speak to those spot-type applications. That's what I would label them as. So we've had several discussions and you, I'm sure, have reviewed and read this. Part of this policy puts a greater financial burden on those spot-type, uh, projects in the sense that it requires a paving machine, which comes with a rental cost and, and all the rest. So, um, I just wanted to try to see the board's view on that, if it's a possibility to have the option to utilize a motor grader instead of a paving machine and not have that lease expense to be able to make this more, uh, let's say, fiscally responsible and, and not, uh, let's say, utterly costly. It would be to utilize a motor grader, which is a sunk cost. The county already has that asset. And, um, in discussion, this possibility has been done before. Um, so it wouldn't come with, I believe, about a $3,500 cost to lease or rent a paving machine, uh, which would then come with the logistical locations and all the rest for these small projects, which are, are really, um, not fiscally responsible to move from spot to spot, uh, for small locations, which may be, um, three to 500 feet of road, not miles of road, which I'm not against the policy. If you're talking mile of road, you need a paving machine. I understand that you're going to be there a while, but this is not the kind of project I've been spoken to about.
So what you're, Mr. Chair, what, what you're saying then is that, uh, you want to put milling in front of certain homes?
Because that possibility.
On certain roads?
County roads.
Ca- county roads, sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, um, I think we need to carefully consider, um, if we do that, we need to carefully consider the impact to, uh, engineer, implement, and maintain these what have been deemed, in my opinion, to be substandard roads. Um, you know, um, I've got areas in, in my district, of course, that people have asked to have milling put down and, uh, I, 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 in front of their house. And I've just refused to do that because, um, in some cases, uh, the road is a widely traveled road and you've got log trucks that go over them and, uh, all kind of traffic. And then I, I think it would create a nightmare, uh, for our staff to maintain them. Plus, I think it would be a, a waste of, of money. I know, Commissioner Moody, you did a, a whole district, but, you know, and that, that was different. That wasn't picking out one homeowner and, um, and, you know, um, giving them something that a, a lot of people want. And then I just wondered too, with doing something like that, um, you know, you, you come forward and you say, well, I needed a such a, such a address because this person has COPD or, or whatever. And then are we actually violating the HIPAA law, um, when we bring that kind of information forward? Um, and is it, is it fair to the rest of the property owners who also want, uh, something in front of their homes? Is it fair? How do you pick out, well, I'm going to do it for you, but I'm not going to do it for you? Or say, your, your district, you can do it, but I don't have many funds and so, well, sorry. But then how come he, somebody else gets to do it? I mean, it, it just, to me, it just doesn't seem, it, it just doesn't, um, um, seem like a, 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 a good idea. And, you know, the way it is now with the limited funds that, um, each one of us get each year, um, not one commissioner is ever going to have enough of money to properly, um, um, pave a road, just a little bit we get. But, you know, and we, if, if, perhaps if, if, if all of, if, instead of each commissioner having a, a small amount of money that you can only do almost nothing with, just think if we took all the money that's given to each commissioner and pulled it and then in time, I think you would have enough of money to let staff to do something. You could let staff go through what we already have as established protocol in determining what roads get paved. I know you look at the traffic pattern, how many homes are on there and, uh, so forth. And so staff could look at, at the criteria and then with more money, um, I think we could get a whole lot more done, quality roads, than just a little piecemeal here and a piecemeal there. None of us really get to do anything substantial.
I've noticed my road fund money, it takes all I can do with just that little bit of money to keep up what's already paid. Fill in the, the holes in the road and fill in all the edges of roads and patching, patching the turnoffs and all that kind of stuff. Uh, I don't think we'll ever have enough money in a road payment fund to pave a road. And, and even if you did have enough to put it all together, I mean, what, we should draw a straw, see what district is going to pave the road in?
No, I think, no, of course not. I think if, uh, look at the criteria that's, uh, uh, that we already have criteria, but, but, and, and look at, you know, which, which road meets that criteria first. I mean, I'd be willing to take mine to do that so that maybe with the money pulled together, we could do something other than patch. We could get something that would be more valuable. And I'd sure want it to be unbiased. I mean, I want them to look at the criteria.
I just, uh, I did a road in front of two people's houses. Just because the gentleman had issued back some time back. And then I had a whole road that was done that the county motor grader graded up all the pavement. That was on the road on a, I mean, they, he took it from a great, a, a whole piece of paved road and made it a dirt road in one day. I had to go back and milled the whole road. I couldn't afford to repave it like it was. So I had to go back and milled the whole road in a whole subdivision because of the county motor grader operator. I mean, that's what I did, but I, I did, I did in the past, uh, and one, one.
I mean, that's what I did, but I, I did, I did in the past, uh, and one, one road was done in Steenhaching for some people that were sick along the road, you know, that I know of. Those are the only two that I know of that were done. And somebody said there was one done up in, in, in your district one time for the dust. I, I, I don't know where exactly who's it, who it was, but, but, uh...
I don't have a lot of, in District One, there's not really a lot of county dirt roads that run in front of folks' houses. I mean, I have some county dirt roads, you know, as far as fourteen and CC grade, but running in front of folks' houses, I don't, in District One, there's not, not a lot of that would do.
But I'd love to see where a, a person maybe could buy the milling and the county motor grader could come by and spread it out if he wanted milling in front of his house. I'd be all about him, uh, buying the milling and then the county motor grader, no more expense than that would be, uh, to level it out, you know? And, uh, if, that would, that would help all the neighborhood. I mean, that's, and it would help the county not have to grade that part again too, you know, uh, if they milled, but, um, I feel like somebody's sick, we've got the dust coming in and when I can't breathe, I can't even get out of the yard. Uh, in my case, a man had a shock down in his, in his garage and, and he couldn't work in his shop in, in dry weather because the dust just boiled in there and just, and he couldn't, he had to go in the house and get an air conditioner, couldn't, couldn't breathe, you know? He had, he had issues and he was a veteran and, 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 you know, and what I did. But I'm, I, y'all doing your district is fine with me, you know? If you want to work something out with a man owner to buy the milling, I'd be willing to chip in my road fund money out of mine to, to, to send the grader out there to level it out, you know? I mean, that wouldn't be a bigger, bigger deal to help, you know?
So that would mean that the resident would more or less supply the material, but the county would do the, the spreading of the material?
Just spread it and not, not use a paving machine.
Right.
Because on those roads, like you're talking about down there, there's enough traffic on that road, it's going to watch more affect that road anyway. Even if it's done with a milling machine, it's, it's not going to stay there, so much traffic on that road. You know, I'm, I'm familiar with it. The gentleman called me to and asked me about it.
I've got several of these. One of these is a dead end road that I feel like may not be as much traffic. Somebody might do a lot of traffic, but nonetheless, I mean, it, you know, this policy somewhat says for milling, you need a paving machine. So if we were to adjust that and the residents apply the millings and we were able to spread that with the county motor grader, well, that would be an offset to the cost for sure.
I'd be fine with that.
And, and it wouldn't be biased in the sense that we picked this person and not that person if they were willing to provide the millings and, and also it would have to be an acceptable grade of milling so that the motor grader could spread those evenly.
Right. I had a gentleman ask me what he thought about me paving the road in front of, coming off the highway into his house. And I asked Mr. Conrad about it and, uh, Mr. Conrad's answer was to tell him thank you. And I'm trying to throw you under the bus, but that's, and, and, but that was, it'd be a blessing if that man paved the road because on past his house, there was a bunch of other people that used that road too. And this is a dead end road, you know? And I, I felt like that was, if he paid that part of it, if he would pay for that road paving, I would be fine with it just like Mr. Conrad was.
What's, I mean, if we move forward in this direction, what's going to happen when you come along here with, when residents start seeing these milling roads in front of other folks' houses? What's going to happen when, we obviously provide the material, but what's going to happen when we come along to the next one and it's already there and they started seeing folks spread it with their own machine? Are we okay with folks doing it and buying, going and buying the material and spreading with their own machines on the county roads?
I mean, we need to let Ken talk about that.
I mean, it's gonna, it would happen. I'm just saying it's gonna...
I think what we're trying to do is provide service to spread it to the county's spec and make sure the material is approved.
Right.
That, that would be what this policy would say.
I just see folks potentially saying, "Hey, we, I can just go do that myself." They go buy the milling, have it dropped and spread it on the weekend and whoever, who, who really know?
And I think you're correct.
I mean, at the end of the day, you have folks put roofs on houses and don't everybody park them on the weekend?
Very much. And, and I will say that, you know, we're discussing of, um, a milling policy that was put back in 2013. And you don't typically see a lot of historical perspective in a policy like this, but yet in this one you do. And what you see is it gives a historical account of what was tried, the result, a different way that it was tried, and the result. And the conclusion from that is if we tried it these ways and we found that this one was the best, produced the best result in the end, that's why, excuse me, that's why you have the policy shaped the way it is. It's because of tried experience. And now we're suggesting, it is suggested, that possibly we would deviate from this under the auspices of saving funds. And what I'll tell you is that, look at your own curvornesses. What is one, one thing you can do in there with respect to requesting a variance? What isn't allowed to substantiate that? A cost. You can't come in there and say, "I want to deviate from this because it's costing me too much money." It is done this way because it produced the best results. It is not envisioned to do these spot treatments. And I will say that, and this is, you need to take my county hat off if you want, I'll put my private hat on, is that I don't believe that there is a public responsibility to address a private issue that at least one of the areas that this is being discussed, that home was built in nineteen seventies. That road was dirt then. That road is still dirt today. There's nothing that has changed. The county hasn't had any action that produced a different condition that existed, uh, how much is that, twenty-five, forty, fifty years ago?
Fifty years.
So where is it now my responsibility as a taxpayer to address the cost associated with a private issue that has no bearing on a public benefit? So I, just as a citizen, and that's, that's my subbox, that I don't, I don't think it's appropriate. Beyond that, the policy is written this way because of experience. And what you saw, one of the best cases, I think, is what you referenced to, and that was Strickland Landing Subdivision. That was an old chip sealed road that was basically slag and tar. It had a propensity to pop out. And, you know, somehow, some way, the decision was made that that road was going to be, instead of continuing to patch it, they did take it back to, I think it's far if I didn't, take it back to a dirt condition. That was one of the first times that the county took and actually prepared the road bed, contracted with, I think it was Ronnie Hicks that did it on, and put down a uniform mat of this material. It happened that that was a very good quality of milling material that was done. But what we found is that if you put it down correctly and it's in the proper conditions for you to use that material, the only variable you have is the quality of the milling. And the quality of the milling is there whether you're going to suggest to use a grader to put it down or a milling machine, I mean, a, a paving machine to put it down. So let's control what we can and hope for the best on what we can't control. And hopefully, you know, when we, if we do get into a situation where we can go maybe onsite and physically look at some of the milling material and see, is it oxidized? Does it have a liquid content in it? Is it still going to bond? Has it been double crushed? Does it still have large blocks in it that we know won't go through the paving machine? If we can do that kind of stuff, then the other is the best way that we found to take and put it on a road and not, you know, and, and I'm not talking about these little spot, spot treatments. The next thing I'll say is that, um, we do not encourage, we strongly discourage, private work on public infrastructure. Allowing private to go through and, and you're, you're absolutely right, it would just show up and do something, you know? They're going to call the local guy and say, "Bring me three loads of milling and I'm going to get out there with my box blade, going to put it down," and low and behold it's going to show up. When that road starts tearing up because the people down the road are going across, you know who's responsible for that? We are. We are physically and legally liable for that road network. That's our responsibility. We do not need to just open the gates. And I believe that it will happen because of abuse. You give someone an inch, they'll take a mile. Is that, you're going to wind up with those situations where somebody does something or we just take and throw it down just to kind of appease somebody to alleviate this condition of, um, dust at their home? And then how much is enough? You know, is it, is enough here? Is enough a hundred more feet? Is enough a hundred more feet? So I, I, I can't see that it's a good situation to get into. Uh, I feel there's more opportunities for abuse and subsequent problems than there is if we were to stick to the way we normally do things is to where we start at a hard surface and then we try to go to a hard surface. We don't do this hot scotch type stuff. So we don't pave roads in the middle and leave dirt on both sides. It doesn't make any sense. So I wouldn't suggest that it would be sensible to do the same thing here in using just a different material, that being the milling.
And I, I agree with you. You're the engineer, you have all the expertise with things like this and, uh, what you said makes sense, but I would like to piggyback off of something else you said when you first started as a private citizen. And I think about, like Commissioner Newman was talking about, well, one of these is at a dead end. Well, if these people, uh, you know, say if we would allow them to pay for the milling or whatever, you don't know what kind of milling they'd get, but if it ended up that he wanted to use his, um, road paving money to, to purchase the milling, then, uh, and Conrad, this is a, a question for you, w- and he put milling or he or someone, any of us put milling at the end of a road, that would particularly benefit one person with taxpayer money. Can you address that?
I think you can do that, but it may not be such a hot idea as long as you're not benefiting yourself as a commissioner. It's not your road. It's not a road in front of your house. If you recall many years ago, um, we had a commissioner that voted for, uh, you know, a paving of, a road in front of, in his house and he ended up with an ethics complaint. That was years and years ago.
But, but public dollars benefits one particular house, that's okay?
Well, it's, it's not a good idea, but I don't know it's an ethical problem. You follow what I'm saying?
Well, not something else. So, you know, saying that the county and the citizen can work together and get something done.
Well, that's been done in the past, for sure.
He's saying there's nothing against it. There's not a ordinance against it that with what Commissioner Newman's, uh, talking about here is there's nothing against doing what he's doing, but if it's ethical and the fact that you've got other constituents that with the same setup that you could catch a lot of heat.
Well, you open up Pandora's Box.
Yes, you can catch a lot of slack because you, and like that, I don't have a problem with that's, you know, what someone wanted to do within their district. You know, I don't necessarily have a problem, but I would also say that, you know, I put down a bit of milling myself in places and when you go to put this milling down dirt road, you, you know, you all would know as well as I do, over time, and I'm talking a short period of time, these trucks coming down this dirt road, the milling turns into dust. So when these trucks, when they, when all this dust, when it comes up, well, guess what? Where's it fallin'? It falls on top of the milling. But when they drive around the milling, you got the same scenario, you got, you still got the constituent, they still got dust flying through their property. Now, actually, I don't have a problem if someone wanted to do that for a, you know, resident in their district, but I just, I think a couple of different reasons, they going to be, coming back to the drawboard with the dust is what I think.
I just think, listening at, at, at staff recommendation, it just doesn't sound like a good idea for any of us, including myself, to, to do these spot, um, substandard paving projects.
I'll give you the short example of a problem that we had before any of y'all's time. It was called Grantham Hill. And Grant, now you remember Grantham Hill because you were there. And they came, the people, it was not a county road. It was just a wagon wire when it rained.
Still is.
And they could not get an ambulance in there, they couldn't get the school bus in there, and it was a rainy, rainy time. And so, uh, kept getting the answer to the question, "Well, Conrad, can they do that?" Well, you know, you're thinking about somebody with a heart attack, you know, they couldn't get to it, you know, helicopter couldn't get to it there. And so it was a one-time emergency, uh, fix on that road. Well, what happened? They did the one-time emergency fix. What was it, six months later? Same situation. He couldn't. And so, again, uh, Michael, it, it opened up Pandora's Box, if you understand what I'm trying to say.
Oh, I understand that, but I also understand what Commissioner Booth is saying. If a resident purchases that material...
Oh, I wasn't talking about that. I was, I was just giving you an example of Pandora's...
Oh, I appreciate the example. I mean, I don't take any of those things lightly, but I also agree that if the resident's willing to purchase that material, that that's not coming out of the paving fund of any district or any commissioner's fund. The only cost is the same cost that the county already has, which is the maintenance on that dirt road.
Which is a county road.
Just county property, which is a county's responsibility. So where I'm at with it is, you know, this particular case isn't on the end of a dead end road, it's a dead end road. So that means the traffic is not of a high volume or there's not a high volume of heavy traffic like log trucks and things like that. I could understand where that certainly would break down millings if they're not put down in a thick fashion and how roads and the conditions certainly get extreme when it's dry like it is today. But I also understand that if the resident is willing to purchase those millings and we merely spread those millings, and as experience, our experience as a county is that we have put those down successfully in these type settings and that it's still succeeding today. So the only request would be that we don't have to have a paving machine to do that. So it's not just an effort to get out of the ordinance situation of, well, it's cheaper because this isn't an ordinance, this is a policy. So that's why we had a discussion to see if it's suitable. I think it's a great suggestion if the resident has this need and they have the availability that they purchase those millings and it's not really, it's a sunk cost because the county already has the motor grader as well as the staff that's going to operate it.
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
A question just came to mind, um, that I hadn't thought of before. I wonder if there, if the citizen purchased the millings, say, you know, the county adopts this policy and the millings break down in a very short period of time, would there be an expectation on the citizen's part if they were unhappy with the, the way the millings held up? And that's, that's the only potential concern I would have if, if the citizen invests their money into a project like this and it's not successful because, now Kenneth helped me with this, is it, is it always a, a question about how the millings will bond and how they're, they'll perform and how long they will last?
Typically, yes.
So is there a way to, um, help to, I know we can't guarantee how the millings will hold up, but is there anything that we could do to ensure, say, the citizen invests thousands of dollars or even a thousand dollars into the, to the millings in front of their house and they break down very quickly and they become very unhappy because they made an investment and then the millings are not holding up? Would we have any exposure as far as...
You get an agreement for them. You get an agreement.
And what if they don't? And so the agreement is going to be they would be financially responsible to pay to maintain that segment for perpetuity?
Sure.
No way? Anything to find out?
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. No, 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 no. You're going too far. You're going too far. Wait a minute, wait a minute. The question was if there's, if, if the person, um, paid for the milling, then you have an agreement saying that they hold us harmless and they're, they know that they're not, we're not going to go out there and do it again. It's a one-time shot deal for milling. They, they guarantee that they're going to pay it, but, but the board does not guarantee any way where it is going to be successful. And what you're going to have a lot is a lot of people say, I'm not going to sign that agreement. And then you've got your, and it's over with. Yeah, they don't get the milling.
Well, now, one, uh, uh, one part of my district, there was milling put down on a little road long before I came along. So here I get elected and they're calling me because you're talking about some holes and a mess you couldn't hardly drive over it. And then they were calling me all the time, wanting to know what the county was going to do, what the county was going to do. And it, it, it turned out to be a mess over there. Um, so I'm, I'm a little cautious of that, but I'll tell you, when you talk about opening up Pandora's box, I've even had some of my constituents to talk to me about pouring oil and things on the road to cut down on the dust. So if you're telling y'all people to purchase milling, what would stop them? I mean, if they, and, and as long as they're paying for it, they can do whatever they want to. They decide, they decide they want to buy a bunch of oil and put it on the road. I mean, I do think that it opens up Pandora's box.
That's what I said. That's what I said. I said, I don't think it's such a good idea, you know? But there was a, it was a two-pronged question. If you listen to what, what the answer was. It was a two-pronged question.
I, I would also suggest that I don't know how we could enter into an agreement that indemnifies us for the balance of the public that is going to travel across this one private agreement segment of road to where, let's say that it does degrade and there are issues with the traveling public that go across that. Who, who has that responsibility and liability then?
I mean, at the end of the day, it's just, I know, but at the end of the day, it's just milling the motor grader can grade the milling up and go back to a graded road. And then we would just have, we'd have to scoop it out and get rid of it, but I don't think we would continue on milling over and over or something that didn't work. But I mean, if that happened, I guess that's what would, I mean, motor grader have to run over it and just smooth the road back out. I mean, obviously your milling is not going to be but about four inches thick.
Correct, it'll be four inches.
So, I mean.
Heard a road right down there, might go to Mike Hunter's house at the county mill years ago. You know, you want to talk about it off the bucket road?
Just the.
And they just went down there, they had patched a bunch of holes in it. And it was, uh, it was milled, I think it was the first road that they ever milled, just to the paving road, they'd milled it.
When you go past forty grade.
And it's a county grade.
Around the curve, red on the right, carp, is it carpenter road or? Carpenter road? Is that a county road?
I think.
Yes, it's county road.
But it is, it is good on the whole way.
They milled it and it, it over the years, it's, the log trucks coming off the end of it off Foley's land. It beat holes in the road and all Paul River land for us was coming off end of the road down there. Somewhere another log truck coming and going, beat holes in it. We just went back recently and that's the olden road going to Mike's house right there.
And Hank is saying that he's, he's actually getting to where he's not even using milling, um, to do some of these patchworks because you get a thin layer of it in the potholes and it doesn't have the ability to bond to anything.
Right.
He's using coal mix, which is more expensive.
That's, that's what they did the other day down there, they said.
So that's how we're addressing maintenance and it's not typical status quo type maintenance, um, as, as it would be for a lime rock road. There are costs associated with trying to maintain the milling surface different than a graded road.
Right. The gentleman that talked to me about paving the road, he was going to start out on the highway that's paved and paved six hundred foot past his house and he shot where his semis and all that would keep coming out. He was going to pay for all the paving, six hundred foot of it. And the people lived down below him and they, they, they said they couldn't afford to pave it all the way to his house, but they'd love to have that most of the road paved anyway. But it starts on the highway around six hundred foot, that's this man's shop, but he's got semi and all that comes in there and he keeps the road going up and he's willing to put his own money out to pay, to pave the road.
And we, we would, just as I think he said, you know, thank you, you know, happy. But that's thank you with the following ordinances to where that, if he's spending the money, he needs to build it the way it's supposed to be built.
Well, he's going to get out of some funding, he's building the road.
And that's fine, sir. It's still under our, our public works oversight.
Right. And he wants to do it to your respect.
Yes, sir.
You know, he wants to do it, he comes and says, I'll do it exactly.
And that's fine. I mean, that, I would wish that more people would pave the roads. I mean, it'd be cheaper for us, but, you know, we're, we're happy to, to have that happen as long as we can oversee it.
Right. He wanted, he wanted to oversee it. He said, I want to do it to get where my semi won't be, you know, burying this road if it be found to have.
And the reason that is, is because we know we have that liability of that road network being a public road.
Right. He willing to do it, whatever, right, yeah.
Tell him, give us a call.
Yeah, that's right.
Honestly, I, I don't have a problem with it. You just, I just think Commissioner probably due to rest judgment and the situation given, uh, you know, property waiver, hold of harmless agreement with the property owner. You know, for them to know that any issues, we're not spending any more money on it. You know, potholes, stuff like that, we're not going to just fix year over year for all.
The problem I have, we're going to give staff recommendation.
And the current policy.
And what?
And the current policy.
Right. And I, I, I just don't think that's right, but, you know, I'm just working with you.
Well, this is a workshop anyway.
Yeah.
Say again?
It's a workshop.
Oh, yeah.
No decision's going to be made.
But I don't think that we have the, the, um, well, that we have staff, um, approval to be doing all this stuff or at least not recommended. But that means something. To me, it does.
I, I never heard of this before. You know, this is new to me. I always thought the city of a county paving road, I ain't never seen nobody pave a road themselves. Or Cole Jones. I was with the city fourteen years, that didn't happen. The city didn't pay for the job.
Well, yes.
Commissioner, for many, many years, uh, people would come in, uh, with, um, for, with developments, you know, and they would ask the board to waive the responsibility to pave the road, you know, subdivisions. And what you ended up with, this is before everybody's time to set the, um, those, those subdivisions were approved and they were not paved roads in there. And they would come back and rip and snort, you know, and people who bought those, those land, those particular spots. I want those paved, I pay taxes and the developers long since gone, you know? So that's another problem that you had. There not as many of them left as there were, but that was, that was happening a lot. And, um, uh, it was a real problem.
I know some of those.
Yeah, I know a subdivision that I lived in.
That's right.
That was the city.
Definitely had advantages and disadvantages. I mean, disadvantage and, and he just kept the dirt on top of milling.
So do we have any guidance from the board as far as moving forward?
I'm not for changing the policy, I'm not for spot, uh, milling.
I don't have a feeling, but what we, we, I think we need to go, look like the policy needs to stay where it is and even if you, what if that man moves or something and, and, and the people live there don't want that? They want a road built to specs. Well, we don't do that. It's like, I'm living on a paved road, a milling road. You can have all kinds of problems and people will find loopholes. That's one thing they do, we're shopping about. Not that I'm against that either. So, but they always told me you couldn't take county equipment on private property, uh, get county equipment and do private property work for private citizens.
Well, this is on a county road.
County road.
This is not on a private roadway.
Yeah. There's a county lime rock road that they, they have to buy lime, taxpayer to buy lime rock to fix it every time it gets out, you know? And that milling would solve that four hundred foot of road. You wouldn't have to buy no more lime rock to put on it. All graded, you know, I mean, that's just, uh, I had neighbors down below this spot that I, the milling I put on that road down there, um, it started at the highway on the paved road and it's a county road and they milled it so many hundred feet. And then the people that lived down at the end of the road want to know when I'm going to finish milling the road. They wanted to know it was going to come on down to their house. And I explained to them the situation. They knew the people that lived up there, knew they were sick, you know, and I, you know, and then they understood why we did what we did, you know? See that?
So the one that does, uh, the roads that have a little spot milling on, how much money does that save us in maintenance every year? I mean, the butter grader, grader probably has to grade up to it and if it's a little spot then on the other side of it. So how much money does that save us?
I don't, I don't know that I can quantify that. And I know that on one of the spots that was done previously, we still had continued maintenance because that spot became very rough. The, um, homeowner was very unhappy with the result and we ended up, I'm sure doing an equal amount of maintenance on that spot because of, um, the, the, that particular spot became very rough. I, I wouldn't know how to quantify how much we would even save.
I, I mean, because if the grader is there anyway, he just drives over that little spot. So I don't know, I'd like to know if, if, if in a year's time, does that really save substantial money at all?
I don't know.
Compared to having to go back and fix milling? Because it will tear up. It will degrade.
But it'd be your responsibility to right it.
No.
So we said, we put a warrant in there, but yes, sir, if I purchase that.
Now, let me ask you something else. So you, we talking about a whole road or we just talking about a spot?
It's a one, one feet, a spot, yeah.
Well, one foot, what man could make?
But I don't know how we could avoid future maintenance even on that spot, especially if the millings didn't hold up or broke down. Then I would think we would still have to go back and fix it. That the homeowner couldn't be responsible for maintenance.
We're holding responsible to put it down. We're holding responsible to purchase the, the material. He would be responsible to purchase the material and fix it.
And the maintaining it?
Yes.
Really?
If you, if you're asking him to buy the material out the gate, why wouldn't you ask him to fix it?
Conrad, could we do that? Make them, uh, say you got to fix it too and maintain it forever?
Sign the agreement.
And then if he sells it, what happens?
I don't know that you could get where, run with the land and where it would be for a, a purchase of later on. Uh, I, again, again, folks, you're, you're, you're opening up a, I don't want to be tried, but you're, you're opening up a problem.
So Conrad, if the, it, just one more thing.
Please.
If, if the person along the line says, well, I, I'm sorry, I can't afford to fix it. You know? And then you've got neighbors on either side saying, well, you know, that's, uh, knocking my car out of the limo because I've heard all this stuff. It's all, you know, messing up my tires and everything and I, I want the county to do something. Then I can see where you get into, how much is it going to cost to try to make them do that when they don't have the money to do it anyway? Or they flat refuse to do it?
Well, you get into part of a third-party beneficiary type of situation where you can get into a problem with those folks and you're, you're hitting, you're hitting the nail on the head with regard to that. It's just, um, again, you're darned if you do and you're darned if you don't. Because, you know, you're supposed, you know, if you have a, if you have a, for lack of a better term, a graded road, that's a county road, you grade it, right? Now, you don't grade it every time they call, do we? It's on a, on a list and it goes every, what, six months or something like that?
No, we have some that are on will call, some are on set frequencies.
Wow.
Uh, usually a two, a two-week frequency, two to three weeks.
That's amazing.
We, we keep them from motor grader pretty busy, you know?
It's only going to work in South District. Two teams.
But then once again, that's, you know, that is a county road, it's a responsibility. And when you do it every two weeks, then you set a precedent, right?
Yes, sir.
Do you know what I'm talking about, y'all?
They expect it.
Yeah, yeah. Whereas with years and years and years of doing that, at some point you could have done something better than that if you didn't do it, right?
Yeah, yes, sir. There, and there is a lot of discussion of, at what point would it been more cost-effective to approve this road relative to keeping it as a graded road? And a lot of that stems from having enough traffic on it.
Yeah.
Uh, we've discussed mine, uh, milling policies.
That's it, that's the last hour, yes, sir.
So we don't make no decision, no way, right?
We can't make a decision, no.
Vote to the, just to remain in the Highway Fourteen, no, Leroy Tetter?
Yeah, that's, uh, this is for me after, uh, Mr. Leroy Tetter naming Highway Fourteen from, uh, Highway Ninety-eight to the Incopina River. Uh, I've been talking with family of Leroy Tetter, actually some friends of, uh, Leroy's. Uh, Leroy born nineteen nineteen. He enlisted in the US Army nineteen forty-one and he was a part, he was in the Battle of Normandy. It was June sixth of nineteen forty-four. Were he, he was wounded? Uh, actually, you know, he was.
Got it somewhere.
Thought to be dead, no, he was thought to be dead until they got to him, you know? And, uh, there he come out of the Battle of Normandy, uh, moved to Michigan eight years later, moved back to Taylor County, uh, raised his family, you know, the East Bay River opened between fourteen ninety-eight and eighty-four. He herded cattle through the Hickory Mountain area. Uh, he worked as a part-time, you know, sea officer, you know, in those areas. He was part of the building of Hickory Mountain, you know, he, he had cattle all over, he had cows all over the Hickory Mountain empowerment where he had to herd his cattle. Once they went to build, construct this Hickory Mountain empowerment. And he herded his cattle away from the empowerment and was a part of, helping build this, uh, uh, Hickory Mountain location. Uh, so that's compliment to family, we just thought it would be appropriate to name this Highway Fourteen in honor of Mr. Leroy Tetter. Uh, coming up on June sixth, it was the, the day of the Battle of Normandy. Uh, he named one of his kids after the battle that he was in, New Norman. So, uh, he would, uh, we just thought it'd be appropriate on June the seventh, meeting is headed to vote the name is Highway in honor of Mr. Leroy Tetter.
I'm signing with that mistake.
You going to put it on the agenda for June when?
Seven?
June seventh.
He was, he told, he, his family told me there was, and the landing board he was in was only five of them survived the first day of baking.
That's right.
He was one of them five that lived on his old landing board that, that. He was one of them five that lived out of his whole landing barge that, that hit the ditch.
That's a, that's a big number, but it's, there's five, ten thousand folk que, and they're still, and they still say there's, they didn't gather all the bodies.
Can I ask a question, just 'cause I usually deal with the details here? Are you wanting to change it from Eaconfina River Road to Leroy Tetter Road?
In honor of Leroy Tetter, yes.
But are you physically wanting to change the name or are you just designating the road that, because, and I'm asking because of addressing?
I would say designating the road, I would say want to change the road name. I think we're saying designating the road.
Okay.
Uh, in honor of Leroy Tetter, yeah.
I agree with him. Some of the bridge out there.
That was at Sheffield.
Sheffield.
That was, um.
My cousin Moody up there, he drove that.
Yes.
Well, the one on Woods Creek, that was, uh.
That was Norman Tetter.
Norman Tetter.
That's good.
That's normal.
Okay. That's one of his boys.
You gonna put it on the?
We can, yes. Do, do you want a resolution?
Yes. June seventh.
So you're gonna put a, a sign or insignia or something up at the head of it or the both ends of it, I guess?
A sign designating Highway fourteen in honor of Leroy Tetter, yes.
The way it, uh, all it, Ronald explained it to me was that we wouldn't change the road and the addresses, there would just be a sign there.
That's right.
Dedicated. Dedicated.
Just like, Kenneth, you designate the highway in honor of Leroy.
I don't have a problem with it.
I just deal with all the nine-one-one addressing, that's why I was asking.
Yes, that's right. Now, we don't wanna change the actual name, but we just want to designate the highway.
Both to discuss the June workshop.
So, on the board calendar, the June workshop is scheduled for June twenty-ninth, but that is the date of the Forest Association of Counties Annual Conference. So, the question is if we could possibly move the meeting to June twenty-second, which we have a morning meeting at nine o'clock and then have a workshop at six o'clock. I don't think we should delay the June workshop because some of the items that will be on the agenda are time-sensitive. Um, but that's the question we have, if we can move it to the twenty-second.
What, what I'd like to do, I, I, I'm not in, I'm not interested in coming at nine and having to come back at six. Either do it before nine meeting or do it immediately thereafter, so we can do it all at one time and be done.
So we could start at nine o'clock with the workshop and then have the meeting to follow?
Or, or, yeah, uh, do you anticipate, you don't know yet if that's gonna be a long agenda for the workshop?
I know one item potentially on the agenda will take quite a bit of time.
Okay, so, uh, uh, I would say do the regular board meeting, just like it's been always advertised, and then immediately take a break and immediately following do the workshop.
Okay.
I mean, that's just me, you've got four other people here, but that way we don't have to go home and then come back.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So, June twenty-second, have our meeting and then have the workshop to follow. Okay, thank you.
It's nine AM.
All good and fair.
Okay, all right. Okay, both to discuss environmental services, shipping, transport, just give your opinion.
So with the, um, retirement of our previous mosquito control coordinator, um, as I've updated you before, that, those duties are going to be assumed by Heather Jensen, who is our superintendent for environmental services. But in order to, um, not, to try to, um, equalize, I guess, some of her job responsibilities, what we are planning to do is to fill the animal control coordinator position, have that be basically a direct report to environmental services, and then Heather would assume the mosquito control coordinator job responsibilities, and it would just basically free up her time, and so she can devote it to mosquito control, and it would, it would place an onsite supervisor at animal control. So we would still have, you know, the, the three animal control positions, uh, just one of them would be in a supervisory position, and then we are asking, um, we're planning to add a secretarial position, um, who would help assume some of the other duties that would be vacated by Ms. Jensen. And we could do it all within the current budget, but, um, that is the background for changing her job responsibilities. Uh, so I just wanted to brief you on that before I bring this, uh, job description back to the board.
So this would not cost any additional, um, okay, it would, it all even out, just the way it is?
Yes, ma'am, 'cause basically Heather would be taking the previous coordinator's position, and then we would have a secretarial position that would help assume her duties, and then in animal control, you would have an animal control coordinator, and, and this used to be more in line with the way that, um, that department was organized, and we're just basically going back to that organizational structure.
Okay, I, I personally don't have any problem with it, but would you, um, would you justify for the public's benefit, uh, the secretarial position, because you sometimes, we get a question sometimes on these kind of things.
Absolutely.
So, would you justify that for us?
So, Ms. Jensen has, uh, a lot of administrative-type duties now that she would be unable to fulfill if she is the, basically our act, our acting mosquito control director for all intents and purposes until she is able to take her test, and, um, the plan is for her to pass her test and for her to be the onsite director. So it's, it's basically just shifting duties, so she's not in the office doing paperwork when she needs to be out in the county running the mosquito control program. And it also, it also ensures that someone is in the office. Um. Previously, she has more administrative duties, but she needs to be out in the field, Gary is out in the field quite a bit, and it ensures that someone is in the office to take calls and, and help the public.
Thank you.
So you got two animal control people or three?
It will be three total because one of them will be the coordinator, who will be the onsite supervisor, and then two additional animal control officers, so it's a total of three.
Yeah, you, you ready for the next one?
Yes, sir.
Both to discuss the master project list.
Um, so as you know, quite a few of our projects are on hold, um, because we do not have a work squad, um, to do the, to, for the labor, and also material costs are so high now that rather than, um, even buying some of these materials, we're just going to roll these costs over into next year. Um, Kenneth did update the road projects for us, and I would like to, um, discuss with y'all the paving at Forest Capital Hall and just, and it's, oh, okay. Um, just bring to your attention that unfortunately, we are a little concerned about the budgeted amount. Um, and we will, because it does include any funding for design work. And from what I understand, after meeting with our public works director and with our engineer, we need a better idea of what the vision is for, for repaving the parking lot. I think the costs that I was provided were to maybe mill and resurface, but the concerns that I'm hearing from staff is that that probably would not hold up long-term. And they have asked me to come to the board and question the board, uh, uh, where I can find the information of what the vision is for that project? Do we want to take everything out, remove some trees, you know, put in material and redesign that area? Or are we just trying to resurface what's there? And the concern is that it won't have the intended effect.
What, what is, uh, what is needed? What, you know, you talk about the intended, what is, what is needed, what's proposed?
I don't know that we have a proposal, so that's, that's the issue at hand. Um, and so my question to the board is, and I'm not sure who's, who asked for this project to be completed. Um, this is something that has, has taken, I, you know, actually, we're probably on year three of discussing it, and I didn't realize that we don't have a de, a design in mind that, um, the costs that I was provided were basically just to resurface the area that's there.
Well, uh, you know, we've discussed this for a long, long time.
I, I realized that.
Over the years, and it sure is a, a safety hazard for certain service.
Right.
Um, and obviously, you know, I don't know, people park out in the trees.
Right.
And there's holes out there, assuming all the stumps have been removed. Um, but there's roots out there, um, so I think that that's a, a, a safety hazard out there as well. I know when we go there, you know, I'm very, very cautious nowadays about, you know, stumbling over a root or falling in a hole.
Right.
Um, so I don't know, I, I, it would be good to have a paved parking area.
Where?
At Forest Capital Hall.
And you talking about paving and following that authority paved, or just paved what?
Yeah, because when, during events, you know, everybody parks out in the trees and you're gonna stumble over a root or fall in a hole if you're not careful, it's dark. Don't we have lights there yet?
Well.
They did lights in the parking area.
You can't pave, I mean, you got them long lake pines out there, you go to digging out there, milling out there around them roots out there, you're gonna end up with more dead trees.
Well, is the, are the trees?
They're kind of what you paved around, so you do that, all the tear, you know, those trees won't live if you do that. I think, I'm not sure if this repave, but they take out some of those anyway, and I think that might have been part of the design because of the roots and how it's broken up.
Right.
You know, that pavement that's there.
Trees would have to be removed.
I mean, I mean, it's affordable, seeing what costs are, if it's, if it's an affordable accomplishment. I think it's, the safety factor says we need to resurface what's there for sure.
Okay.
Well, if you think about the removing trees, and I mean, well, I'm, of, of anybody, I'm the one that, that loves to save a tree and whatever, you know, but i- i- if you think about public safety, what's more important? The trees or somebody falling over a root or in a hole and, number one, getting injured, number two, suing the county, which has happened, let somebody sue the county for stepping in a hole out there. So, you know, I, I wouldn't like for any of the trees to die or be removed, but I also understand the, the safety aspect of it also.
Your lighting, your lighting will give a lot right there. If you repave that what's paved there and then put some good lighting on it, the person that fell in the hole fell in the hole way out there amongst some trees out there, uh, on the backside of the building best I can remember. It was just like a stump rotted out and left a hole in the ground and they stepped in that, in that void there, or it's what, what I, as best I can remember about that lawsuit that went on about the person stepping in hole and they broke their ankle. But that can happen anyway, you know, there's some, if, if you in the dark out there walking and, you know, there are many acres out there that night, uh, you can't see nothing, you know, and I, people park all out there in the festival and the, and the barbecue dooms and, you know, there's people park all over the place out there. Nothing, so. I, I just would love to pave what's there, it's in my district, and I, I look at it real close. I mean, if you redone the pavement that's there, uh, and not added no pavement, I think it'd be fine if it puts some good lighting out there, yes.
I mean, you could put that phase as you do the resurfacing, and then the lighting project comes behind that resurface project.
Right, that's what I do, resurface what we got, I mean, it's got holes in it, it needs resurfacing.
So you don't wish to, to add any additional parking or, or pave any areas that aren't paved now? You just want to resurface what's there now?
Well, we could start with that and, and see how it goes, but, um, we need to really work on the handicap parking area. I, I, it needs to be expanded and, um, you know, it needs to be white spaces and you don't have to need to step, step up and down there. Um, I didn't notice how, how, how it was until I was there one day.
We, we replanted a lot of trees out there, got it replanted, and, and it, and they're coming, and some of them, a few didn't make it, but most of them made it. And, uh, I mean, uh, and every, every summer we get beetles in some of them trees out there. People back in, do them, skin them up, one thing or another, or, uh, one thing or another, mother may just kill one every now and then, lots of them, right?
Well, I would be in support of repaving the existing parking lot, you know, and enhance the lighting, but if there's gonna be any additional parking created, I don't know that I would wanna do it under the oak tree, under the tree on the same side of the road that the building is on, maybe the opposite side of the road, when you turn into the right, that's just kinda some dead space not used.
Well, when you go around behind the building on the west side, you know, where the dumpster is back there and, and the building where they do the cooking in right there.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a stretch right, they say there you can pave without interfering, but that's true, you can't, you ain't gonna kill it paving by it, but then fine, if you go to dig up the roots, you gonna kill them.
Well, I, I just think that when you turn into the, off of nineteen to the right, and like you got some seeded trees or whatever that kinda blocks the, it kinda blocks the parking lot anyway, if we were to create more parking. That, and, and there's not, nothing, it's not usually, I mean, I don't, you know, we actually used to have, do, hold a family reunion out there a year together, and I think we play football in a little field out there in front, you know? So, uh, I, if there's gonna be any additional, uh, you know, parking created, I would maybe look along the lines across the road and not on the same side, but just, you know, take away that look of a big pine, I mean, I think.
Yeah, well, what about, you know, just kinda along with, with what you're saying, is, uh, on the left-hand side? Uh, have parking on the left-hand side too, now you would lose, you'd probably lose just a few trees, but you could make parking on that side too, you know, there's already some parking, um, that's not paved there, and then if you just came on out to the road with it and paved that, that would offer some additional parking.
On the left-hand side, closest to you, okay.
On the west side of the building, there, there's a lot of area right there that's dirt. You know, that could be paved.
Yeah.
And that would be, that would give some of our parking places on that backside, all the way to the oak tree, you know, right there, you know? I don't hear many pine trees, but, you know, I'd love to see, I'd love to see it, you know, lit up no matter what it is.
Yes, we've been talking about that forever.
I know.
How about I, um, talk to our engineer again and our public works director and see if we can get some idea of how, with the cost for a formal design would be, so we really know what's appropriate for that area, if we need additional fill, if we need trees removed, if we can add areas, and then I can bring that back to the board.
Sounds good.
And then we'll have a better idea, um, I think that the costs were provided, but that really a clear idea of what we're trying to accomplish, and that would, that would clear everything up for all of us.
I agree.
Okay, very good.
Don't you want to run the road having milling on it? Or is that paved road you're going to back?
That's, that's all the same, you know, what it is.
Anything else?
No.
Do you need anything? Nick?
Yes, sir.
Vic?
Hi. Hi.
You should get that.